Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education. Order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, December 13th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see a packed house here in person, and I'm sure we have plenty of people. Looks like 16 people on Zoom, so welcome and thank you. Good evening again. Thank you for all being here on a busy Thanksgiving week. On behalf of the Board and the Administration, we wish you and all your families a very safe family and friend-filled Thanksgiving with plenty of good cheer and good food. We truly have much to be thankful for, moving through and hopefully past COVID. Please all remain healthy during this holiday time and all your traveling. We continue to be a district on the move. We are well-funded. We are building and renovating new schools, as I have previously said. But we are going to continue to stay focused on our students, their health, and their safety. Our priorities must and will continue to be on that. A big shout out to the theater group on another incredible production, The Tempest. I think John was somewhat behind the scenes on some of that. Incredible. Well done. On the sports front, a shout out to the incredible accomplishments of our girls' swimming, field hockey, and volleyball teams. Well done. We appreciate your feedback and involvement. Staying informed is key, and with our new Communications Committee hard at work, I look forward to continuing to work with our parents and community on keeping everyone informed, continuing to listen, respond, and ensure parents feel a transparency around the hard work of our professionals and what they are doing each day for our students. Working together is key. With over 4,600 students in the Darien Public School System, we have over 9,200 parents and guardians. We have many ideas, thoughts, values. We have left, right, center, and we talk about almost everything to do with our children's education. We will continue to listen, learn, and work with the experienced professionals, parents, and students to stay focused on our students. I would ask that you continue to email, call, and speak through your local schoolteachers and administrators. Reach out to the Administration and the Board as you see fit. This way, we can understand the needs and challenges of our students and have them understood in the right context of the issue. Social media, Facebook posts, anonymous blanket emails do not always have the correct context and only add to the challenges and spread misinformation. The Communications Committee has already started to build out outlines to help us improve and build a more comprehensive plan around the many forms of communication that face us each day. We have a full agenda, and we will start to hear and talk about the superintendent's budgets and initiatives this evening. As we move fast forward into the budget season, I want to again stress the priorities that will keep us focused. Our focus has to be the whole student, the physical and mental health of each student in a safe and secure learning environment. As I've said at the last meeting, we have invested in so much over the last few years, and we must continue to invest in our students' education. But we also need to make sure that all of this investment is working 100% in helping our students and staff each day. Prioritization is key and will drive this budget season and discussion. You have to be able to implement and execute 150% on these priorities, or we have failed our students. We have to understand our capacity and resources to deliver and not overextend ourselves. Our priorities, as I mentioned at the last meeting, that will keep us focused on our students are the mental and physical well-being of our students and staff, the safety and security of our students and staff, our commitment to our facilities and our infrastructure, supporting our teachers through our new contract, our commitment to our Communications Committee in delivering on a comprehensive communication plan, and continued work on transparency through the Curriculum Committee. Ongoing work that is in process and has been prioritized in no particular order, a strategic plan and DEI, recruiting the best. The teacher shortage is real. An article today had 74% of teachers thinking about their careers and next steps. We have new statewide special ed system implementations around PPTs and an enormous amount of work and time that goes on behind that. COVID remediation and test scores. I think we are really just starting to learn more each day, and we fully do not understand the remediation needs from COVID. We have literacy program work and feedback from the state and compliance with state mandates. This is an issue across the state. After all of that, I have to say, our plate is full, and we must execute on these initiatives and priorities to the benefit of our students. Education never stops, but we need to make sure we are focused on the basics each day. We have to make sure we understand our academic goals for our students and base them on reducing stress and anxiety while providing that safe learning environment. So to wrap up my thoughts, I think we have our priorities and what I have outlined above. Let's focus on the student. Let's execute on all we have invested in. Let's keep our priorities. Let's continue to listen to students, parents, teachers, and the community as a whole. So thank you, and again, I wish you all a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. That, Michelle?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Sure, okay.
My motion is to add the words to Agenda Item 8A. It currently reads "Presentation and Discussion of 2023 and 2024 Budget Initiatives." I'd like to add the words "and possible action" before "budget initiatives." So I'll read it as I'd like it amended. Presentation, discussion, and possible action of the 2023-2024 Budget Initiatives.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Mrs. McCammon? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay, then get to that topic. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. We will move back to public comment. Michelle?
Good evening. For participants who will be participating today, you will have up to three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address.
We will start with folks in the audience.
Hello, my name is Megan Matros. I live at 155 West Avenue. And I am here tonight because there has been no follow-up, no resolution to the last time I spoke at your meeting. And I just want to review a few things. I followed your chain of communication. And I learned per Julie Droler, the Director of Elementary Education, there's not supposed to be gender education in elementary school. So contrary to Julie's statement, we have this book that I shared with the Board last time. In this book, it's categorized under gender identity. I'm going to show you. In the Royal Library, so this is the Royal Library, it's categorized gender identity. So you have a book that was read to a second-grade class that is categorized under gender identity, and the author's intent is also gender identity conversations. So there is a major conflict here. You have your Director of Elementary Education saying there's no gender education, yet they are using gender-themed books with a class full of second graders, seven years old. Now, there's another layer to this conflict. I just want to share Dr. Adley's comments, our superintendent here. I'll tell you what it's not about, Adley said. It's absolutely categorically not about gender identity, gender expression, gender ideology. That is not what the text is about. It's not what we teach or discuss as part of SCL or diversity goal. So that's a conflict as well. So we have the superintendent saying that this book is not a gender-themed book, but it's categorized as a gender-themed book. So my question for this board is, when are you going to hold this administration accountable? When is this board going to address the administration and demand honesty, one, transparency, and ensure that they follow their own policy? And in this case, the policy is, there's not supposed to be gender education in the elementary school. So thank you all for your time this evening. I appreciate it. I know that is a lot of work, what you do. But we should be focusing on keeping our youngest learners safe and not sharing things with them at an inappropriate age where they have no idea the complexity to these topics. It's inappropriate. It is age inappropriate. That's it. So thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Ritchie. I live at 16 Stony Brook Road South. I am the co-chair for CDSP, but I'm speaking on my own tonight. I have some concerns about the process last week regarding the special appropriation request for the security FTEs. On Tuesday, November 15th, the Board of Finance learned at their meeting of an increase to the projected Board of Ed surplus as a result of the lowering of the ECR submission threshold. Why was the Board of Finance notified about the change before the full Board of Ed? The Board of Finance discussed the change before any public discussion by the Board of Ed Finance Committee or the full Board of Ed. Due to the forecasted increase to the budget surplus, the Board of Finance did not make a motion to vote on the Board of Ed appropriation request to fund the security FTEs. Therefore, the appropriation request process was terminated by the Board of Finance. Board of Finance members stated in the meeting that the special appropriation for security FTEs was not necessary due to the surplus. And one member stated they would like the process to move even more quickly and to speed it up. This is concerning since one could perceive this as the Board of Finance exercising line item of control over the Board of Ed operations. Given the change to the ECR calculation and the revised forecast for the Board of Ed surplus, it would have been most appropriate to allow the Board of Ed to opine on the continued necessity of a special appropriation rather than have the Board of Finance ostensibly make the decision for them. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan Thornton, and I live at 49 Birch Road. I'm currently a co-chair of the PTO at Ox Ridge and a member of the CDSP. It is no secret that the district has had its fair share of staffing issues at all of our schools. This is a problem that I would never expect in towns such as Darien. Many residents moved to Darien because of how highly regarded our public schools are. However, the current staffing issue could greatly impact the quality of our children's education. I will speak in regard to Ox Ridge, but I know that there are many staffing issues throughout the district. Many existing teachers, parents, and therapists who are currently employed at Ox Ridge are kind, talented, and truly care about our children who receive special education services. The special ed staff are incredible teachers and an incredible support for our children. Unfortunately, there have been numerous complaints this year regarding special ed staffing issues and the lack of communication from the Special Education Administration, not only at Ox Ridge, but throughout the district. Over the past few months, the Ox Ridge Special Education Representatives and I have been approached by many parents whose students receive services at Ox Ridge. The parents have voiced concerns over missed services, the lack of powers to support their children, the special ed administration, as well as staffing issues that have left students without services. This isn't a missed session here or there. This ranges from missed services for a week or two to students who have yet to receive services since the start of the school year. All of the missed services of children with IEPs appear to be due to staffing issues, which is entirely unacceptable. The children who have IEPs and have been affected by these staffing issues have IEPs that are out of compliance. This is a legal issue which should be a great concern. Children who receive services in our schools are the biggest single minority group in our Darien School District. These children often have a difficult time with transitions as well as have difficulty when their schedules, teachers, supports are not consistent. Therefore, the staffing issue in our special ed department has negatively impacted the children in our schools, the students who need the most support. A tremendous amount of work needs to be done to help both staff and students recover from the effects of teacher shortages and resignations. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Good evening. My name is Kate McIntosh, and I live at 11 Deepwood Road. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of--
Could you just adjust the mic so we can-- thank you so much.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
My name is Kate McIntosh, and I live at 11 Deepwood Road. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Special Education Parent Community at Middlesex. We are concerned with the number of special education staff that have left the district. Since June 2022, we have lost an overwhelming number of staff from the special education team. This is a deep concern of parents as these learners require a specific level of specialized direct instruction. The district has done an amazing job in a very tough environment to hire teachers for our special education department. I believe the department is now fully staffed, but the tenure, experience, and knowledge of these teachers and administrators that left cannot be replaced quickly. While we are trying to recover from teacher shortages, our students are still in school needing to be taught. Many service hours have been lost during this transition. How is the school planning on making sure all of these students are being taught appropriately, in line with their IEP? MMS's direct reading staff is very compromised as most of our new hires are not currently trained or certified in the Wilson Reading Program. Certification in the Wilson Reading Program requires 80 hours of training. For those of you who do not know what this is, direct reading services are given to our most challenged readers who need scientifically research-based direct instruction taught through the Wilson Reading Curriculum. How are our wonderful teachers supposed to deliver appropriate individualized support if they are not trained in the program? Most of our new staff has only received a three-day introduction training on Wilson. Over the course of the first three months of school, many of our special education students have not had consistent teachers in their specialized classrooms. How are these students expected to master their goals and objectives written in their IEPs when they do not have a consistent trained teacher? There have been loss of service hours and IEPs that are not being followed with consistency and fidelity. Sarah O'Malley has been given an Herculean task just one week before the school year started. She was given a new position with very few special education staff members. She has done the best that she can with the limited resources. The Board needs to be aware that we need to remediate this situation, and it is likely to be costly if it is not addressed. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening.
Good evening. Katrina O'Connor, 15 Highland Avenue. I'd like to raise a couple of concerns with you this evening regarding the most recent proposed transfer of funds due to the projected surplus from the ECR grant to fund the operating costs of the SSO initiative. It is no surprise that the district has suffered losses in staff and providers that shortages have resulted in administrators having to increase caseloads and cover services where needed. In some cases, as we are hearing from parents, students are not receiving their services as prescribed in their IEPs, which is likely will likely result in an agreement for reimbursement for private services or compensatory services to be delivered at a later date. This is one of the consequences of a teacher shortage that you have all been discussing this fall. It is concerning that you are spending the surplus money that is being projected so early in the year before you even understand or realize what your actual reimbursement will be later this spring. The most you will get back is 70%, and given that the state has already lowered your threshold, there is a possibility that you may get less. You don't know what you don't know, and you are reallocating your surplus too early in the process. If special education costs exceed the projection, this could result in a request for an appropriation from the Board of Finance and the RTM. In the past, these actions created a collision course between boards, politics, and residents with the majority of damage inflicted on children with disabilities and their families. As you know, special education services, as prescribed in the IEPs, are mandated by law. Going before the RTM and the Board of Finance with an appropriation to cover special education costs sets up a narrative in our town reminiscent of the crisis of 2012 when negative public opinion and positive public pressure to cut costs resulted in egregious systemic violation of student rights. It is paramount that this board revisit Attorney Sue Gamm's report. During the introduction, she carefully examines the events leading to the hiring of Dr. Osipuk and the directives to slash costs. This is not to say that Mrs. Klein and her staff are going to act in bad faith as previous administrators have. Thanks to the work of Attorney Gamm and the subsequent work of Mrs. Klein, the district today has standard procedures to ensure compliance. Mrs. Klein and her team should be afforded the room to make hires or changes to meet the demand as we realize shortages, learning losses, and a mental health crisis. We don't want to turn back the clock 10 years. The Board should act in the best interest of the community and ensure the dialogue around special education is free from divisive rhetoric that could be harmful to children and families. Please don't let this happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Hi, Sarah Vortel, 22 Brushy Hill Road. I just learned that this month, it's actually the 50th anniversary of an album called Free to Be You and Me, in case anyone's heard of that. And it was an album that was designed to teach kids that boys and girls aren't different at all, that every child, no matter which gender, can wear whatever, like whatever, behave however it wants, be whatever profession they want, play with whatever toys they want, that every child can just be free just to be. I have seen the YouTube, which every one of you can do, of the book in question, Julian is a Mermaid, to me and to many other people that I've spoken to. I view it very much like a Free to Be You and Me type message, again, that's been 50 years in the making. And I just wanted to share that and let you know that there's many people that do feel that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Hi. My name's Armel Jacobs. I'm 12 Fitch. I'm here with pretty simple comments tonight, but they're twofold. The first is to ask you to keep DEI and SCL in the curriculum, in the budget. These acronyms can scare people. I know that there are a lot of people in this town, in this country, that hear these things and, you know, get set off in certain ways. But every day, there is more information. Every day, the misinformation and the fear dissipates a little bit more. So I'm asking you to keep these things and stay the course. And secondly, which is a related comment, I want to ask you guys to stand up for the curriculum that you chose. I want to ask you guys to stand up for the teachers that you employ, who don't have a choice. They implement the curriculum that you chose, that the state chooses. I want to ask you guys, listen, a lot of people are going to talk tonight, probably a lot of people who want to speak out against the SCL curriculum, against Julian is a Mermaid. When you hear them, when the people watching this hear them, I want all of you people listening, you people especially, the ones in charge of leading this community, to lead. Okay? Don't follow. Lead and stand by the things that you put in the curriculum. Stand by your teachers because you asked them to implement the curriculum. Just be brave. Every day, it gets a little bit easier. Every day, the fear dissipates. In my opinion, you're doing right by these students, so please just be brave. Keep doing it.
Thanks for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience?
Belinda Fang, 22 Beach Drive. Good evening. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I wanted to express my gratitude to our educators for reaffirming the value of everyone in this community and choosing to teach from diverse literature that illustrates the richness and worthiness of our collective differences. Over 30 years ago, Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop, the mother of multicultural children's literature, published an essay titled "Windows, Mirrors, and Sliding Glass Doors." She stated, "Literature transforms the human experience and reflects it back to us. And in that reflection, we can see our own lives and experiences as part of the larger human experience. Reading then becomes a means of self-affirmation. Diversity in children's literature is important for all. It helps adolescents learn about themselves and feel like they have a valid place in the world. Without it, they may feel invisible or inferior to those we more frequently see books written about. The goal of diverse literature is to expose children to stories that often aren't told. Diverse books teach empathy. At its best, literature helps children understand that despite our differences in race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, age, size, cognitive and physical abilities, all people share common feelings and aspirations. Those feelings can include love, sadness, fear, and the desire for fairness and justice. Some of the benefits of diverse literature provide friendship skills, problem-solving skills, positive self-image, and respect for others. Sometimes, books are simply a slice of normal life that demonstrates that when it comes down to it, we're all much more similar than we are different. And the simple truth of the human experience is that we're not so different after all. I grew up in the 80s and 90s in a melting pot neighborhood in Brooklyn. And even though the demographic makeup was quite diverse, the exposure to different cultures was quite limited in the classroom. Back then, I don't think I came across too many books with characters that resembled myself or that of my peers. I'd say in the past 40 years, children's literature has finally caught up. It's evolved in ways that allows for all our children to have the chance to feel seen and worthy.
You're almost at time.
And after the difficult year our community has had in recognizing the young people who are hurting, I'd say diverse books are more important than ever in making our children feel significant, accepted, heard,
You're at time.
and that they belong.
Thank you. Thanks for--
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, anyone online?
We have one more.
Sure, step right up.
Hi, my name is Diane Urban. I am the CDSP Community Outreach and DEI Chair. Put these comments on my own.
You could just maybe move the mic up. So yeah, you have to bend. Thank you.
Did you get that first part?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
However, I will say that in my role, also as the PTO co-chair at the DEI Committee, there have been a lot of conversations among parents. And the positive side to discussing all of these things is I think a lot of people are starting to become engaged and really pay attention to what their kids are saying about the books that we're all discussing. Okay, well, so I'd like to point out one thing in the book. When we're talking about the acceptance, that this book is about acceptance, there's a beautiful page that shows when Julian is imagining himself as a mermaid, and it's all-- it's okay. I can paint the picture, just like we all have. So he's imagining swimming with all of the sea creatures. And there's part where he comes up to this big, beautiful blue fish, and the fish has all these patterns on it, and he hands the, and the fish hands him this sort of necklace. And it's sort of kind of crowning him as the mermaid that he wants to be. As the book proceeds, and he comes out and he says, you know, "Buella, I'm a mermaid too." And it's the moment where the buella looks at her grandson, and it's going to decide, how do I pave the path for future acceptance, no matter what this kid wants to be? A boat, a mermaid, Marshall from Paw Patrol? How am I going to respond to this moment? And she hands him a necklace. It's the exact same image from when he's imagining this in the book. She's wearing the same dress as the fish. The book is about acceptance. It's about paving the path for when kids have those moments with the adults in their lives. They know that they are there and they are seen, and these steps will then be like illustrated when they get further on in their lives and are making the tougher decisions. These are the steps that pave the path to future acceptance. So whether or not an author had that in mind when they write a book, that's not how our kids are reviewing it. I asked my daughter, "What's this book about?" "Mermaids." Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, anyone online?
We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll have public comment. Okay, thank you. Public comment. Mr. Palin, sure.
Well, we have one.
Jim Palin, five-hick, chairman of the Board of Finance as well. I just wanted to point out a few, just a few comments that were made as part of public comment. You know, the Board of Finance did have a meeting on Tuesday, November 15th, to discuss a few of the financial appropriations that you sent forward to us. And as we do with every appropriation, we ask the chairman and superintendent to update their budget ahead of us, making decisions on that budget. And as is typical, Mr. Rudle provided, you know, extreme detail, in fact, it was part of a an update to the budget that he's going to provide at the finance committee later that week. And so that's the budget that we relied on in terms of making the decision to approve the $300,000 of capital. And that the board made in terms of not moving the $300 million of an additional special appropriation to augment the 110 million appropriation made at the beginning of the year to fund the security officers, the SSOs and the and the the Director of Security. And so when we looked at that budget, I just want to make sure everyone's aware, as Mr. Rudle updated, that budget was approaching close to $900,000 at the same time that the board was asking for a $296,000 appropriation. So the reason that the Board of, the Board of Finance did not move that appropriation is not because we didn't support the SSOs, which I think every member at the DIAS spoke fairly clearly about their support for the overall program. It was because you had a surplus that was three times what you needed to move forward with it. And I think, you know, Chairman, as you may recall from that meeting, I think our whole board made it very clear at the end is if and when this board does have a shortfall or some type of deficit, because something unforeseen in education or capital or whatever, you're always invited to come back to the board. And I think that the Board of Finance has always indicated it would always support you if there was some type of unforeseen cost. So that's what makes sure the public understands sort of what the Board of Finance did do and did not do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of fact, those weren't millions, those were thousands.
Exactly. A $300,000 request ahead of a $90,000 surplus. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Palin. Thanks for speaking.
Mr. Denis?
Yes.
We now have raised hands for public comment on Zoom.
Okay.
Jackie, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, it's actually Bill Lennox, not Jackie. I hadn't planned on speaking today, but I just thought it was relevant to bring it out.
State your, state your name and address, sir.
Bill Lennox, 1 Siwanoy Road.
Thank you.
The, the book that has caused controversy, Julian is a Mermaid, is very specific. It's an intent and very specific in its pictures and words. The Earth author stated this, the, if you Google it, every, every Google will come up with it. If you go to Amazon, it's in the gender identity section. If you go to any library in the country, it's under gender identity. If you go to any bookstore in the country, it's under gender identity. And yet, we're being, I've been told by Julie Drohlers privately, and I've read Dr. Radley's public comments, that it's not that. And that's what I have the biggest problem with is it's just the dishonesty. If, if a book is classified as gender identity, if its motifs are specific to transgenderism and drag and pushing acceptance of those concepts, that should be discussed publicly, and the merits and the downfall should be discussed publicly. It shouldn't be snuck in the back door under acceptance. If I had a book about a kid, and he wanted to be a football player, and he bought the uniform, and he tried out for the team, and he made the team, and he scored the winning touchdown. At the end of the day, you said, "Is that book about football?" He said, "No, no, no. It's about a boy's journey." You'd say, "Well, how do you figure that? The book is in the sports section of the library. The book is, the guy's wearing football equipment." I said, "No, no, it's not about football at all." You say, "I'm being dishonest." So I'm just asking for you guys to be more honest about exactly what's going on. If we're teaching gender identity, say we're teaching it. If we're not teaching it, say we're not teaching it and why. But so far, all I've seen is books to mainstream drag, mainstream transgenderism to my seven-year-old, and I haven't heard any answers. I haven't heard any honesty. I'm still waiting for it. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening.
Natalie Martin, you are unmuted and recognized.
Natalie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Name your address, please.
Natalie Martin, 9 Littlebrook Road North. I wasn't planning on speaking either, and I have not written a speech, so apologies for not being as eloquent as Belinda, Diane, and Armel, who did an amazing job. And I fully support their sentiment. I support the board for accepting this curriculum, and most importantly, I support our teachers who are doing the best they can. I think that the the shortage, the staff shortage goes hand in hand with what is happening right now in our environment. The criticism that the teachers are receiving for doing their jobs, for showing up for our kids every single day in the middle of a pandemic with masks, in the middle of a national crisis with guns. I salute our teachers and for them showing up and to add, this community to add this stress of teaching acceptance in our community. This is, this book, right, you're right. The last comment was talking about a book about sports and a journey. Yes. Life is a journey, and acceptance is a journey, and we all change, and we all want to be accepted. Some of us are luckier than others. Again, I support Armel, Diane, Belinda, the board who has supported this curriculum, and most importantly, our incredible teachers, who I hope do not all abandon us. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening.
Jackie Miller, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, how are you? My name is Jackie Miller. I live at 84 Fitch Avenue. I was planning to talk, as I usually do, about school transportation and what an easy win it is for reducing stress on our students and our families by providing adequate school transportation to school, especially at the high school level. But I, I feel that I need to say something about the book, Julian is a Mermaid, which I've read. The book does not contain the word gender. It does not contain the word transgender. It's a beautiful story, much like Sarah Gortel mentioned, William's Doll in Free to Be You and Me, which I read in elementary school. There's nothing harmful about talking about how some people present differently than other people. We all need to understand that as a community, we don't all look the same. And we've heard from our students that they do not feel safe. We heard last year that many students of different sexual orientations did not feel included in the community. This book is important. It doesn't matter whether we're talking overtly about gender representation to seven-year-olds. We're talking about how people look and how people act and what it means to be accepted. And I hope that we'll continue to offer DEI and SEL as a district. Thank you very much.
Thanks for speaking this evening.
Katie Vonovich, you are unmuted and recognized.
Katie, can you hear us?
I can. Hi.
You're going to have to speak up louder, please. Thank you.
Apologies. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Katie Vanovich, 118 Hacker Avenue. I wasn't planning to speak, so trying to get my thoughts together. I just want to make a quick statement in opposition to the proposal of SO, SSOs in elementary schools. The stats don't support this initiative. I fully understand the emotional response to the nonstop gun tragedies in our country. I understand wanting to protect our kids, but I strongly feel that war guns, especially with our youngest students, is absolutely not the answer. Second, I also wanted to reiterate what several speakers said. These include all DEI and SEL programs in our schools. We need to be raising well-rounded, emotionally-developed, critical thinkers. We need to ensure that we're developing the entire child in our schools. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you for the book recommendation. After the last meeting, I had borrowed it from the Darian Library, and I had found it absolutely fabulous, as do my kids. And if you, if you didn't find it to be wonderful and accepting, well, I really don't know what else to tell you. I guess it says something, but thank you so much.
Thanks for speaking this evening.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for participating in public comment. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. Thank you. And thank you for your participation. I'll let our young people speak a little bit about our success of our athletic teams. As Porture commented on the Tempest, I would also like to pass along my congratulations, particularly to John, the cast and crew, obviously, but also to John for composure. Such a wonderful score and songs. Did a phenomenal job. Phenomenal job you did. Thank you. Also want to congratulate our high school robotics teams for competing in their inaugural robotics competition. These are some of the kids who competed last week. It was a very similar competition to BattleBots on the Discovery Channel. Our BattleBots didn't last too long. It was KO'd. That's okay. But it was a successful inaugural event, and thank you to the staff for supporting our students and stay tuned. This is, this is the start of the process. Do you have the picture of the other children, the other teams? You can go back just to see them. I won't talk about them. You can guess who they are. That's thanks, Shannon, and Jill will talk about them.
Those must be the swimmers.
So we are concluding. We're in the final steps of the process for the Director of Mental Health and our Director of School Security. So those will be coming forward in the near future to the board. And we just finished American, I don't know if anybody recognized it, but we just finished American Education Week that really just recognizes those who serve in public education, that certified staff and non-certified staff, and many of our public this evening have talked about what a wonderful staff we have, and actually the need for certified and support staff and the benefits that they contribute to our students and our education. So I want to thank all those people for their contribution to Darian Public Schools, but also to the venture that is public education here in Connecticut and across our country. Friday, December 2nd, is a National Special Education Day that commemorates the anniversary of the first federal special education law, which is now being reauthorized as Disabilities Act, that we all affectionately know as IDA. The date for celebration is Friday. We will be recognizing it with the support of some of our parents and the CDSP and PTOs to include our, the LP program that concludes on Thursday. So we'll celebrate that event on Thursday. And if you want to celebrate it twice, we can celebrate it on Friday also. Just a reminder to the public, Dr. Mark Brackett, I encourage you to come in person. If I could encourage, this is a wonderful opportunity to see refer to him as Mark, in person. He does a phenomenal job. I would ask you, bring a few of your friends along with you or your neighbors with you. I don't think that they will regret the hour and a half or so that the presentation will be at the high school. Honestly, it would be wonderful to fill that high school with our, with our parents, since Mark has been kind enough to come along. And again, thank you to the CDSP for sponsoring that event. Elementary conferences, can you believe it, parent conferences are next week. So we start on, on Tuesday and go through Friday, November 29th to December 2nd. Report cards will be sent home on Monday. Thank you to Mrs. McKemmon and Mrs. Lubin for attending Caps Cave Convention this past weekend. They can certainly speak to it themselves, but I appreciate them representing the board and representing Darian. The theme of the conference was moving forward for all children. The Southern Farfield County Legislative Breakfast is scheduled for December 2nd at 8:30. That's in Trumbull. Certainly, the board chair and I will be attending. There may be an opportunity for other board members to attend. Upcoming is Facilities Committee, December 1st, Curriculum Day, and Communications Committee will be reconvened on December 9th. So on behalf of myself, the central services staff, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and restful Thanksgiving, and members of the board also, and to wish our kids good luck in the turkey bowl. Hopefully, wave. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to student representative reports. John and Swaha, I hope we didn't steal too much of your thunder, talking about all the great things that have gone on.
You're totally fine. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. As people have mentioned, the play just ended. So DHS wants to congratulate all the cast and crew of the Tempest for a wonderful set of three shows last weekend. We are actually currently in preparations for the next show, which will be Newsies. Auditions are going to be held in two weeks, and the performances will be in mid-March, so stay tuned. Again, we want to congratulate the volleyball, field hockey, and swim and dive teams. I personally know a lot of people who have been working super hard to make that happen and, you know, you know, making great sacrifices in some of their academic classes, and I just, I'm really proud of them. And finally, for me at least, the DHS band had an annual turkey drive this morning, and they collected 75 turkeys. So we're very proud of them.
Also, the Darian High School attended its first debate tournament of the season on November 12th at Greenwich High School. We placed, or we won one award in varsity and three more awards in the novice division, so it's a great start to the season. And there are also several food and toy drives currently going on at DHS, including Toys for Tots and the annual student government canned food drive.
Thank you both. Thank you for the update on those food drives and all. This town is driven and really run by an incredible group of volunteers. It's nice to see it, starting at such an early age, and you carrying on volunteerism and service. So thank you and extend our thanks to all your other students that you work with. It's, it's an incredible job. Thank you. We'll move on to approval of minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting, organizational meeting and regular meeting held on November 9th, 2022. Mr. Maroney, second by Mr. Brown. All those in favor? Is unanimous, other than Tara was not with staff. Thank you. We'll move on to board committee reports. Mr. Seeny?
The Finance Committee met last Thursday, November 17th. We had a robust discussion related to the rising surplus that was mentioned earlier and the associated account transfers that we have brought forth to the board with a consensus favorable opinion. I want to make it clear that I am in full support of how the process unfolded. There isn't any scenario that I would envision that we wouldn't present the most up-to-date information when dealing with a fellow elected board when seeking an appropriation. So we're going to hear a lot more about the numbers behind that from Reg, and I thank you for having them prepared for the Board of Finance and our Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Any other board committee reports? Mrs. McKemmon?
Yeah, HHR Building Committee is thrilled to report that we have finished our third cycle of appropriations. So once again, our many, many thanks to the folks that put all that together. I see Dave Martin in the audience. Thank you, Dave, for all those numbers. But thank you to the Board of Finance for calling together a special meeting, to the RTM for squeezing us into their organizational meeting. I see you, Anne. It was a lot of work on behalf, our fellow government bodies did a lot of work to make this happen so that we could build our buildings in the most efficient way and not have separate roof products, projects going on at the same time. I see Kevin nodding. So that's a sigh of relief from us and a thanks, huge thanks to everybody.
So just to follow up, I think, Jill, thank you for mentioning that, but just a thank you to my fellow board members and to the administration. I think last week, we were out almost every night at a different board meeting, either participating or attending. And, you know, I think we work incredibly well with the boards that support the town, whether it's planning and zoning or Board of Finance, with all we have going on with appropriations and building committees. So thank you. It's truly a team effort by a group of volunteers, and especially for the administration after their day job, to be out at night attending these meetings that quite often don't start till 7:30 or 8:00, and board members extending their day. Thank you. It's, it's on top of these regular meetings and all the work that's done by these board members. It's, it's another commitment from a volunteerism standpoint. So thank you. We will move.
I skipped Jim, sorry. Mr. Palin is back there. So I, there were other people I pointed to. I skipped him, sorry.
Any other board committee? Good. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. We might have a presentation and discussion of 2023, 2024 Superintendent Budget Initiatives. Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone. This is the annual opportunity to share a few things, topics that would be in the budget. It's characterized this year the safe and healthy learning community for our students and staff. As we move forward, we'll continue to be responsive to what we hear and also to the taxpayers in town. And so at this point, I'm just going to touch on a few high level. Some of them are, I can't really Some of them are, I can't really say they're initiatives per se, but the budget priorities are things that will come out and that sort of frame the budget itself. For the most part, a lot of it is around the mental health and health of our students and that has already been and safety of our students that our board have been in discussions of for the last couple of months or so and that we've moved forward with, with the recent expenditures and anticipated expenditures around SSOs, Mental Health Director and those particular positions. So you'll see that they're obviously embedded in the base of the budget as we move forward. We also have some grant that would go away, the IDA ARP and the Special Education COVID Grant. So there's a few positions that you're, have been aware of from last year that will be carried over. I haven't named all the positions. I will share that I would reserve the right to amend this, I would reserve the right to revise it, to add to it, delete to it, and so on, so forth. So this is not, this is not by any means a full budget presentation. It's just to get to provide the appetite a little bit and give us a sense of what's coming and for no surprises. So the strategic, I've aligned some of the, some of the topics around the strategic goals, as you can see there. So the first one is really sort of addressing the teacher substitute shortage. We've heard some things this evening. We have lived through this. We've had a teacher contract that's tried to address it. So you'll find that this budget actually tries to support some of those shortages and even everything from substitute shortage to daily teacher shortages. So there will be finances that will go towards that. Special education. Special education needs that we have, both from IEP needs directly and also that address the support of some of our specialized instructional programs. That could be the Excel program, DLC, Fitch, so on. Those are, those are some of the expenditures improvements that proposals that you'll see. New courses and club offerings. The new courses this evening will come through and will be presented this evening. Ordinarily, we'd like to go through the Curriculum Committee. First of all, it's just for the schedule. We'll go back to the Curriculum Committee before it comes back to the full board. And Mr. Trumpberg will speak a wee bit more to that. We have a couple of club offerings to support at the elementary school and one of those being robotics that the board's aware of that would potentially transition in from the last couple of years of private funding. There's enrichment also at the elementary school. Obviously, we want to support class size and enrollment. So clearly, the budget will support that. And enhancing, enhancing some programming for Fitch students. There is some additional program that we would like to provide over at the Fitch Academy. So you'll see that this budget addresses that. Under goal two, support the mental health programming. We're well underway with that. Our final stage here of hiring a Director of Mental Health. This mental health program also will support programming up at the high school in particular. The participation in the Open Choice Program, I would ask the board to revisit that. I think it's good for our students and our school community. The last discussion we had was at the budget process last year, where there was the opportunity to discuss the program and also potentially look at it a different year. So I think it's, it's good for our kids and also helps some other, other children, but primarily I think it's, it's good for our students and our school community. So I've asked the board if they could revisit that. The new teacher contract, obviously, we have tried to recruitment of teachers, retention of teachers. That was a priority for the board in negotiations and negotiate a contract. Clearly contractual obligations is a big part of any budget and a significant part of the budget. And this supports a teacher contract that supports our teachers and district and also supports the retention. Goal five, development and enhancing systems of communication. This is not a big expenditure. In fact, it's a very small expenditure, but it begins to ask the question of exploration around a new student management system. There are reasons to potentially look at a school management system. It doesn't happen quickly. So alternatives, particularly alternatives to Aspen, if anybody's thinking about the school management system. So our parents are probably familiar, are familiar with Aspen. So we'll be starting a process of reviews. This is a relatively small expenditure until and if we decide that we are ready to go to propose a new student management system. The improvement in the school facilities. So we have the implementation, as you're aware, of the school's security officers and the Director of Security. Outside the operating budget and capital, we have the appropriation for further improvements to door security also. We have additional support for facility support and that is one custodian at Ox Ridge. We've also suggested expanding the space for Fitch and a need for additional square footage. It doesn't go outside of the particular building that's in at the moment, but it expands some of the actual space inside. Number seven is not, it's an expenditure, but it's one of the expenditures that's in the base. It's simply the replacement cycle for technology that we normally do. So there's nothing new in there in that capacity. It's not a new expenditure. It's simply standard course with the replacement cycle that we have. So those are, those are the talking points and I'm happy to answer questions or talk to any particular topic.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. I'll open up the board with questions or comments. Mrs. Parent.
Question about the enhancing programming for Fitch. Is that something that we will need to come through the Curriculum Committee and be voted on or is it not, it's not classes per se?
My hesitancy is just, it's just hard to clarify that. It's an extension of, it's not a difference. Wouldn't be a different class per se. It may be an extension of a class or a potential different section of a class, but it's not, it's not a new course, not a new course.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. McGowan.
So just related to that, that whether it's Fitch or some of your special education specialized instructional programs, when are we going to hear about what those mean? Because those are, you know, I know we often have in the first week or for December meeting, we often have a lot of discussion about special education. Is that when we will hear what these line items mean? Again, with the, I'll caveat that saying, I understand that Fitch is not a special education program.
Ultimately, you won't hear about this until the budget is actually presented. Ultimately, you won't hear about it until just prior to the specification.
Okay. So these are program changes or these are staffing changes?
These, well, they're not, they're not huge program changes. They're predominantly supporting staff. There are no program changes to.
Okay.
Mrs. Best.
To follow up on that. So as, as Mrs. Parent and Mrs. McKemmon were getting at, some of these items kind of call for more expansive explanations or presentations than others. And am I understanding correctly that the plan would be to address those when we go through the budget in its entirety? Or do you see some pre presentations to kind of prep us for what is going on?
I'm happy to provide information that I can provide or be able to provide from this point. Some of these are continuing to be worked on at this particular point. So the final decisions on certain, certain aspects of them behind, behind the suggestions aren't all played out because there's some decisions I gotta make over the next couple of weeks. But if there's something in particular that needs to be addressed, I'm happy to address it as much as I can.
I think what I'm hearing is we'd like to hear more about if there's other things other than space that we need for Fitch. I think it's a tight calendar. We're bumping up against one meeting in December. While we can always try for a special meeting, I think that becomes a challenge as we move into the holidays. I am concerned that we're a little behind in, I think, as we've gone through this process and earlier in the season, we asked for an earlier overview and discussion around initiatives and understanding of those initiatives and the impact on students and class size and teachers. I think the budget process really then gets into a discussion around the dollars and cents associated with it. So I, I, it's a little frustrating in that I don't want long programmatic discussions to then go into the budget process. I think we agreed to try and move some of that stuff ahead of the cycle. So I would ask if we have to next week, when we look at the agenda for the seventh, we focus on what the, the board may need in terms of understanding some of these, some programmatic changes. I know we're going to hear about new courses and club offerings this evening and we're going to go over the enrollment report. So I appreciate that. Pause there. Mrs. Parent.
I have a suggestion that maybe we have not heard an update about Fitch in a very long time. So if, I'm fully recognizing, fully recognizing that Fitch is not a special education program. If there's any way to have Mr. Cabrera come next on the seventh and just give a quick, I don't, I know that's very short timeline. But if we get, just so everybody, I mean, we have board members that haven't had any presentation at all about Fitch. So I think it'd be very helpful for talking about enhancing programming, what's there now so that we know what's going on.
Mr. Brown.
Thanks, Duke. If I could have a few minutes here, just to kind of back up a little bit and talk about process and talk about substance. As Duke just mentioned, we've asked for a number of years now to have the process modified, to have presentations, to have information given to the board ahead of the budget season. We've asked to not have budget items and program items be conflated and the two of them running together and learning about objectives, goals, policies, what we're looking to do programmatically as part of the budget process. It's gone on for a number of years. It goes back to the Open Gov, which I think is about four years ago where we mixed that as a budget item. We had buses, additional school buses get roped into what we're going to do as part of the budget process. Bring your own device. I mean, I applaud it, but you know, that was worked in as part of the budget. Wasn't done as a presentation or anything that was done and also the change with the assistant principals and the CS facilitators. So this has been going on for a while. This board has asked repeatedly for the process to be followed. And I think process and stuff, substance, I'll tie those together at the end, but it's important. I'm going to tick through the list here. Addressing teacher and substitute shortages. We just did the teacher contract. So if there's, that's not it. If there's something else that's part of this plan, I didn't see it presented. Special education needs, including specialized instructions. I'm not sure where that presentation is. New courses and club offerings. I know we had a meeting canceled, so we're going to get to that tonight. I guess that's reasonable. Supporting class size enrollment. That's also on the agenda tonight. That's fine. Would have been preferred sooner as requested for a number of years. Enhancing programming for Fitch students. No presentation, as Miss Parent noted. Support for mental health programming. We did hear a lot. We heard from outside experts. There was a lot of information presented. There was a thorough and robust process. So I applaud the effort there. It shows that we have that capability. I would point out two problems in that process. One, there were a number of questions presented by a board member that have yet to be answered before we took action on that. Number two, we took action in the post-vention phase when the experts told us we're not supposed to foreverly change policy and yet we had to rush and put something in place. So I applaud the fact that we followed process there. I'm not sure why we had to do it in that stage and why it couldn't be put off till we exit the post-vention as instructed by the experts. Open choice, as you noted a couple of moments ago, Alan, this board has heard nothing about it since we last voted in February. The new teacher contract, that's done, easy for the budget. Initial planning for potential new student information. First, I'm hearing about it. Personally, I think Aspen's terrible, so I kind of like it as a parent. But I have to say, for board process, not so much. Implementation of school security officers, done. Additional support for facility support, Ox Ridge. We've heard this many times and we know this is coming, given the larger size of the building. So that seems fine. Expanded space for Fitch. First, I'm hearing about it. Replacement cycle for technology devices. Not sure what these technology devices are. Presumably, this relates to the recent rollout of technology done for the teachers and staff. How'd that go? Did it work well? Are the teachers pleased with it? Is it giving them free time? Is it multiplying their ability to teach our students and complete tasks quickly? I haven't heard. That would have been a great thing to hear in a presentation before we start to talk about budget initiatives. So to tie it up, that's process, how we'd like to see things happen in regular course, which we did not see again this year. And the reason process is important is because it gets to substance. I'd like to hear advocacy, why we need a new technology update device cycle. I'd like to hear advocacy for why Fitch has been a success for certain students in our district and why we should expand it. I'd like to hear the board explain to us why we want to, you know, have additional things be added and I want the board to come present that, have all the information so we can have a rich, robust discussion ahead. So we can act quickly and properly focusing on the budget priorities. Hasn't happened again, Alan. Thank you.
Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, I'm going to follow up with a few minutes myself, actually. 295 days ago, we conducted a robust discussion and voted whether it was the right time to implement the Open Choice Program for this current school year here in Darien. As we all know, the motion did not pass. And as the meeting concluded, our chairman reflected on multiple meetings and discussions by stating, we've got a lot of lessons learned out of the process and how we look at programs on a go-forward basis. There's still a lot of questions about the program, all right, in terms of goals and objectives and how students move through and get ties, get through high school. So one of the key lessons that we learned last year was avoid rolling out new programs within a budget cycle. Discussions over open choice, bring your own devices swamped our traditional budget discussions among the various town bodies. And we were actually criticized for that by, I believe, a few RTM members, if I'm not mistaken. Yet we inexplicably find ourselves here again this evening, talking about launching a new program previously voted down by this board in the midst of a budget cycle. We've all read the local news headlines covering suicide crisis, ongoing student mental health concerns, a dip in student test scores, heightened concern over school security and above-average turnover among our educators. Moreover, ongoing strategic priorities, which we heard about tonight, DEI, Ruler, HHR, SEL, the launch of electronic IEPs and the role of new technology among teachers and launching the Communications Committee, which this board finds a priority, will continue. Even tonight, we, like I mentioned, we heard several parents related to shortages in special education. These priorities have been discussed often and throughout the year, but yet not until this evening's agenda was published. Did this board hear anything related to Dr. Adley's renewed interest in launching Open Choice? He didn't take the opportunity to discuss it at this summer's day-long retreat. Nor was there any mention in his nine-page Board and Goals Strategic Plan Update discussed at our recent October 25th board meeting. Open Choice has also been absent among numerous board discussions outlining its priorities. And those are, and I'll reiterate, Duke, mental health, security, facilities, teacher retention, and communications. At best, I see this evening's unilateral move to prioritize Open Choice as a greatly misaligned against the budget priorities our chair has consistently laid out since this summer's retreat. And at worst, the case of willful dishonest by our superintendent with this board. In conclusion, and this goes to my changing the agenda, I propose like last year, in order to move forward with this program within this board's budget discussions, it should require an affirmative vote from the majority of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Other board comments?
May I respond to that?
I will just, we'll finish with board comments also. I appreciate the comments from the boards. I, I think going back, I appreciate some of Mr. Seeny's history. I think with all we have going on, I constantly worry about execution. I constantly worry about the resources that we have. I think a perfect example is what we heard this evening from many folks about what they see are challenges around special ed. I think those are the things that we need to focus on. I think, you know, some of these goals in this document fall within the priorities that I've repeated several times in my board comments that I got from board members that we've discussed several times. I think a little of it is back to basics. It's really supporting what these students need. I feel we're nowhere near understanding what the remediation needs may be for our students. And clearly, you know, there's some need and there's some serious work that needs to be done in short order around special education. I think from an open choice standpoint, I just don't understand how that lands in this deck, at this table, at this point in time. You know, we need to focus on our students and what our students need. It's about prioritization. It's not about the program and our priorities. I just don't see that fitting into our priorities. And I don't see us having the capacity to execute on that. And I don't see us having the capacity to execute on that. Basically because our capacity needs to be directed toward the priorities we've outlined and that I've spoken to several times. And I don't know how to make it any more clearer.
Any other board comments? Mrs. Best.
Thank you. I also rewatched the February first meeting today, which is, was the public hearing and the vote on open choice. And, and where we left it was now is not the time. I, I think that was, so I, I did expect that open choice was coming back, to be clear about that. I didn't think it was gone for good. But to the question of timing, I'm not sure that I expected today to be the day or November, you know, late November to be the time that we would come back. This is something I would have loved to have started discussing earlier in the process if we were to consider it for this next budget. And, and I think the fact that we weren't able to get to it sooner is sort of a testament to why I feel like we, we maybe don't really have the bandwidth right now to do it the way it deserves to be done. I, I don't, I believe in the program and I believe in the benefits that it could bring to our town. And I would just want to be super careful that we do it when the time is right and we can offer to these students what they deserve as well and do it in the best possible way. So I think at this stage of the game, we'd be in a bit of a catch-up rush game. And again, a question of capacity or bandwidth to be able to do it justice at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. Mrs. Parent.
I will just echo what Mrs. Best said. I think that I have tremendous faith that the open choice program is thought out and it is, that it would benefit our students and it would benefit their, wherever they come from. I think that the merits of the program are strong. I see the, see the value in it. I also see a district that's not really doing everything it should be doing very well. And that's on us, that's on the administration, that's on everybody. But if we, we, we are in a different place than we were two hundred and ninety-five days ago. A lot has happened in those two hundred and ninety-five days. I was very supportive of the program last year and I advocated hard for it. I don't know that I can do that again based on where we are right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. McKenna.
I'm going to pile on. But I also think that there are times when our priorities are things that we wish and there are times when our priorities come to us. And I think this is a year when our priorities have come to us. We have a lot of things we have to finish. We have, as we've talked about, DEI and SEL. I'll be voting later this evening for the security guards. I think that's an important initiative, but I think doing that right really matters. We've heard a lot about making sure that those folks are selected and trained very well. And I have full belief that our staff are capable of that, but I think it's really important that that be an area of focus in this time. I also think that mental health needs a tremendous area of focus. And as much as I like to believe that we can all do everything well, I don't think we can. And actually, in some ways, I think we do ourselves a disservice to pretend that we can all do everything. We have to pick and choose sometimes, and this is one of those years.
Thank you, Mrs. McKenna. Other board comments?
Okay, I guess, I guess I'll speak. So I don't think anybody would be surprised. I voted no last year on this. And I voted no because I thought we needed to focus on our children's mental health. And my opinion remains the same. I do not feel that we have really done all we can do. As we, many of you know, here on the board, I've asked question after question that never were answered. I'm still not sure what the hesitation is to answer my questions in public. But I, you know, we have then moved forward with a director of mental health that, you know, does not actually interact with students and does not have any of the mental health professionals reporting to them. I understand it does fill some state statutes. I just am not sure if that, I'm still not sure if that was the right person and if it was not thought out and the appropriate due diligence done. So I will continue to, you know, believe that we need to focus on our students' mental health and until we successfully meet the goals that we have in front of us, and they are a lot, whether it's mental health, new buildings, school security. We have a lot on our plate. Until then, I don't want to support any new initiatives.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. The other board comments? Mr. Maroney.
Since everybody else is going, you may as well. I, I think I have kind of a differing view on why I don't like open choice. Because I don't think we'll ever get to a point where everything is perfect and it's the perfect time to rule it out. I think we're always going to be busy. I think we're always going to have different priorities and where we, where we rate that in our priorities is always going to be difficult. What I think I really struggle with is that I want to make sure the community is behind us. And without having presentation and discussions with the community, we can't get community buy-in. I don't want the children who come from a different district to be used as political footballs and have the program be constantly in flux and question whether we're going to support it in future years. And, and to me, that's what I don't want to have. I want to make sure if we, if we enter into this, that we continue to do this and it's something we do. And in order to do that, there needs to be a community discussion about it. And to have this come through literally at the last minute before we get our budget books in a month is a little too late.
Thank you, Mr. Maroney. Mrs. Lo.
Thank you. As a new board member, I was not part of this board when open choice was discussed.
Make sure you, you get your. Just pull it closer to you. Pull it closer. Thank you.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay. As a new board member, I was not part of this board when open choice was on the table last year. However, I can assure you that I was following along quite closely. And I was extremely supportive and quite excited about the program and really disappointed when it didn't happen. I agree with Dr. Adley that the program seems to benefit Darien students, maybe most of all, while doing something really good for other students. And, and that is very exciting to me. Unfortunately, circumstances have changed and our district is facing some serious challenges and not just in one area, but in multiple. And I share fellow board members' concerns that we just might not have the capacity. And I do hope that this discussion can come back to the table at a time where we have demonstrated metrics to say why we think we can be successful and what might have been barriers to why we couldn't do it at the time. I really hope it's not something that we give up on. But I do think that, that we have some serious concerns that need to be thoughtfully dedicated resources to right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Lo. Any other board questions or comments?
May I respond? Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I respect the board's opinions and certainly, but I agree, we have a lot on our table. And I want to thank my staff for the exceptional job that they are doing on a daily basis in a very challenging environment and a very challenging time, but I couldn't be prouder of them. And I will say, perhaps by not putting this on the agenda at this particular time, sometimes it's, it's too short a little bit because how much information is out there? How much do you talk about it? We're still refining some of things. I will say that, I don't think there's really anything here that's big programmatic. Perhaps I should be more specific in saying, perhaps a wee bit more disclosure, some of our just FTEs and staff. And there's nothing that's a big programmatic change. I wouldn't even say Fitch is big programmatic, but perhaps since board members may or may not be removed from Fitch wee bit and just getting up in that, that would be fine. But there's nothing else in here that is so dramatic. Open choice, we've talked about for, I think, probably three years, nearly, two and a half years or so. But that being said, the process is the board's. I'm going to go to the board. It's the, the board I respect, the board's opinion on implementing your budget and your priorities, right? And hopefully they're the same as, as mine and one supports the other. That's, that's the way the process works and that's, fully respect that particular process. I have an ethical responsibility and a statutory responsibility to present to the board what I think is good for our kids. That's all I'm doing. And I'll close it by saying, I won't get into the history of who said what and what we're saying. I just, I respect what you, what you said, but I will say this. If you're going to attack my integrity, I will stand up for that. I'm not willfully being dishonest and I take exception to that comment, to be honest with you. That being said, I respect the board.
The, the word was not dishonest.
Sorry.
Dishonest.
Pardon?
Dishonest.
Dishonest?
Yeah. Dissident, sorry.
Dissident.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said dishonest. I'm apologize.
You got me. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you said dishonest.
I might have mispronounced it the first time.
Sorry. But.
I think, thank you, Dr. Adley. I think I will reiterate what you said, though. There was no one here that would deny the hard work and the dedication of your cabinet. I deal with them, work with them on a regular basis, as does Jill and Sarah and the rest of the board. So there's, there's nothing here that would shortchange the commitment and the work ethic of your team. I think as you, you spoke and you made your comments, though, I think you actually presented in a way, the challenge that we're talking about this evening is, you're saying on the fly as you're speaking and referencing our comments, that there's not much from a programmatic standpoint that's part of these programs. But we didn't know that till you just said it on the fly. And there's been no, there's been no presentation, there's been no discussion. So I, I think by now, if everyone doesn't realize, we're a very analytical, metric-driven town. I think the board has moved in that direction and, you know, the board wants to see very specific decks, information, financial information behind it. And again, I, I think it goes back to resources, ability to execute. And I think I, I couldn't be more reinforced by the public comment this evening around some of the challenges or the headwinds that are being presented to us from a special ed standpoint. I have full faith and confidence in the special ed team on the ground. I appreciate people acknowledging that there is an incredible teacher shortage. There's an incredible shortage around paras and all the services that go with what our children need. And I, I know from speaking daily to this cat that from March to recruiting to Mrs. Klein from, and Scott, from figuring out what our students' need is. It's there and it's happening. It's just challenging. But if we don't acknowledge it, if we don't organize ourselves around a better plan, then it doesn't get any better. So with that, I'll pause.
Mr. Seeny.
I, I have a process question now because I'm adamant that I don't want to see like a program of open choice in the proposed budget to avoid confusion, to avoid continued conversation. I think, you know, since my meeting here was unanimous disapproval. So the question is to Dr. Adley, do we have to vote against the program or you, will you just remove that item from your proposed budget?
And again, I would thank you, Mr. Seeny, but I want to, if I can, just make sure we're all on the same page here. We're not voting against the program. We're voting, we're, we're voting that we don't feel it fits our priorities at this point in time. Correct. I think to some of the comments that the board made, that we cannot execute it on the way we need to execute it. There is a lot of support for the program throughout the community, throughout this board. We left a lot of open-ended questions. There was no pickup of those questions. There was no ask of us to continue to look at it through the course of the year when we left off with it. And it just, it can't be dropped on us in a deck as we're heading into Thanksgiving and the holidays and the budget cycle. So my view is, it's not about the program, it's about our prioritization. It does not fit with our priorities right now because we are not able to execute it the way we need to execute it. So there was an earlier motion to.
Well, I guess the question, again, the question's directed, Dr. Adley, will you remove it from your proposed budget? Or shall we conduct a, a motion to, around the program?
So the way it's meant to work, right, the way that the budget process works, the superintendent presents the budget to the, the board. The board then takes over that particular budget. And you take ownership of the budget from there. That's, that's the way the process works. And I will bring forward to the board, I'm certainly listening to the board. Been respectful of the board. And I'll bring back the budget that I think needs to be brought back before the board.
Mrs. Parent.
I was just, I just pulled up the motion from last year, but we didn't, we don't need to.
I'm still not clear with the answer, I guess.
I guess they, the, the question is, Dr. Adley, you've got unanimous feedback from the nine members of the board. Are you going to bring open choice back into the budget cycle?
Well, I'm going to reflect on what the board has told me tonight and make a decision accordingly.
Well, I'm happy to move a motion forward because I don't see any need to continue the conversation. I think we've given you and the administration the feedback around it. So I'm happy to entertain a motion that we're all in sync that open choice does not fit our priorities. Mrs. McKenna, I rely on you. What is the motion we should, or Mr. Seeny?
It's going to be a favorable motion, but if you're not in favor, please don't vote for it. And it's the same verbiage as we used last year, just with a different here. So the motion, which I'll make right now, is to approve the Darien Public Schools' participation in the open choice program beginning in the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Again, this is in the favorable. A motion to approve Darien Public Schools' participation in the open choice program beginning in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Do I have a second on that motion? I do not have a second, so that motion does not carry. So again, it doesn't fit in with our priorities as we go into the budget discussion. It's not programmatic and if the administration wants to bring it up from a discussion standpoint as we go forward into the new year, I expect to hear from the administration on that. Thank you all, Dr. Adley, to the cabinet, to the, the board for the conversation around that. Any other additional conversations or thoughts around the budget priorities and considerations from the superintendent? Thank you. We will move forward to discussion and propose new courses for Darien High School for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Dr. Tranberg and Mrs. Dunn, welcome, Mrs. Dunn. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving. Just as Dr. Adley mentioned, I just wanted to do a, a process calibration. So first, two budget cycles ago, we moved the course approval process up forward in order to make sure courses were approved prior to our budget discussion that's going to happen next month. We had a cancellation of our last curriculum committee meeting where they would have had an initial conversation. That would not, the, the committee doesn't approve, approve things, they just move them to you for the discussion. But we didn't want to delay the process because then we would be out of sync with our budget meeting that is, is coming up. But we will go bring this back to our curriculum committee and our December meeting prior to the approval, so we can talk in more detail. The other piece that we've discussed about at the request of some board members is, well, what's not, what's not running? Where's the stuff that hasn't run? So I've asked Mrs. Dunn just to speak to a few of the courses that have been approved in recent history that have not run. They don't calculate into, we need less FTE because the students are still taking other courses. But just so you know what those courses are that are recently approved. And if you have other questions, I can certainly mind that with the high school administration after. And I'll let Mrs. Dunn get us started. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm pleased to be here to introduce three new courses that we're proposing at the high school. And I thank Mr. Keeler and Christian Dockham and Christina Mauricio and Colleen Thompson for being here with us as well. Before I ask them to come up and give you the details of those new courses, I'd like to go through some of the slight changes in the memo requesting some changes to current courses. I'm going to jump over the Spanish because it's related to the other course for a second. And the AP Human Geography, we have a request to open the enrollment to grade eleven. Currently, the course is open only to grade twelve. The department has asked us to consider this and bring this to you so that our seniors are not the only students who may opt for this course, especially those who have a real passion for history. AP European History, this is a very slight change. Currently, we have tenth grade students who, after great experience in Western Civ and who have entered honors world studies in grade ten. Students have asked for permission to pursue the AP European History. It's an appropriate follow-up because the Western Civ content is so closely related. We'd like to formalize that in the student records so that students who are in honors will be all aware that they may pursue. We'd like to formalize that in the student records so that students who are in honors will be all aware that they may pursue that request. The third course is our African American and Black Studies and Latino and Puerto Rican Studies course. This was new the year before last, and we were able at that time to run the two semesters as separate courses. The state of Connecticut requirement to run the course this year required that the course be a one-year course. Only three of our students registered for the course, and I believe that was partially because they have so many other courses that they're pursuing in grades 11 and 12. So we would like to follow the state requirement, offer it as a full-year course, but also separate the two semesters and allow students to take one or the other. And the final request is the neuroscience course. When first proposed about 15 years ago, the course was not proposed with a laboratory period, and we would like to add a lab period to the class. It is the only lab science in the building that doesn't have that extra period, and we'd like to have it line up. The course content has changed during those 15 years, and we would love to see our students have that opportunity to pursue lab in that class. The Spanish, Ms. Mauricio is going to talk to you about the new course proposal. In order to meet the needs of the new course proposal, we would really need to rename the current Spanish 5 class to distinguish it from the new course. So this name change is dependent upon your decision to move forward with the other Spanish class. So I'm going to ask Christina to step up and talk about the Spanish program, and then we'll follow up with the other information.
Hi, everyone.
Hola, como esta? That's as much as I've got.
Gracias. I'm going to start with the renaming of our current Spanish 5 class. And then I can talk about the new Spanish 5 class because they go hand in hand. In order to create two hun, two years of 300-level Spanish options for students who would like to continue their language study past level four, we have proposed a new course entitled 300 Spanish 5 Hispanic Culture Through Art. This necessitates a name change for the current Spanish 5 course to reflect more accurately the current curriculum, which uses film as the content focus. Students in this course are learning about the history and culture of Spanish-speaking countries through the medium of film. They watch films of the Spanish-speaking worlds that North America, Latin America, and Spain, which provide the historical and cultural context for developing their language proficiency, and read news articles and works of literature that are aligned to film themes and topics that provide the backdrop of the settings of these films. Lessons require higher-level thinking skills such as expressing opinion, analyzing, predicting, and comparing and contrasting in the target language. And students continue to master more sophisticated vocabulary and grammatical concepts and are assigned a substantial amount of written and oral proficiency tasks. Both the film and art courses will provide options and choice for students for advanced Spanish studies at the 300 level. Juniors who select this course or the Spanish 5 course with an art focus may also develop their skills with one additional year of Spanish 300 and may choose to enroll in AP Spanish Language as Senior. So this is an additional pathway to an AP course by the time they graduate. So that's just a renaming of a course that we currently have. We're not changing anything in the curriculum. We're just changing the name to reflect what is currently taught. So in tandem with that, we're proposing a new class. The prerequisite for Hispanic Culture Through the Arts is Spanish 4, Spanish 4 Honors, or AP Spanish Language and Culture. And you have behind you or in front of you, I'm not sure if you can see on the screen, this lovely chart that I made. My colleagues know that I love a good chart. And you can see where these two courses fit together. So Spanish 5, oh yeah, zoom in, that's great. Spanish 5 Culture Through Film is the current course that we have with the new name on it. It's in pink. And Spanish 5 Culture Through Art is the new class that I'm proposing, that we are proposing, excuse me, in yellow. So you can see where these courses fit in the multiple pathways that we offer our students when they come to us at DHS. This provides a 300-level Spanish option for students who want to pursue a Spanish course in their senior year other than an AP course. And additionally, students who complete AP Spanish Language as Juniors, who do not pursue, choose to pursue AP Spanish Literature, may opt for this course as a Spanish 6 offering in their senior year. The reason why you see 5 and 6 there with the same course title is just because it will be a different designation in Aspen, depending on when the student has taken the course. It's not an additional course on top of what we're offering. It'll just be how the course is designated in Aspen. This, the Hispanic Culture Through the Arts class will concentrate on the art of the Spanish-speaking world, which include visual arts, architecture, literature selections, and music to increase students' knowledge and appreciation of the arts while further developing their Spanish communication skills at the intermediate-to-advanced level. This course will cover works of art beginning with prehistoric cave paintings of northern Spain all the way through today's Hispanic influences on global pop music.
So thank you. It's always good to have a chart, and I appreciate the way you walk through that. So thank you very much. Any questions while you're up there? Any questions from the board specific to what just went over on Spanish? Mrs. McCann?
Not for tonight, but I, when you're back for the curriculum committee, we don't typically forecast enrollment super precisely, but I think it'd be helpful to see some general enrollment trends and what you're expecting with this change, please.
I'll make you out of chart. So I, I think too, to clarify that the wonderful thing about this is that our students, many students are landing at DHS in Spanish 3. And so the need for this course in our typical 300-level sequence, it allows our students who don't choose to go the AP route, which is wonderful and fine, to have a course as a fourth year in their language. And so I think that's an important point.
Thank you.
So we'll go on to American Sign Language, which is another new course. Christina is going to present that to you as well. And we're excited to offer this. This is also considered a world language, so we're going to.
So American Sign Language, or ASL, is ASL 1, which is the course that we're proposing this year for next year, is designed to provide students with a language learning experience that is different from other, more traditional language courses. ASL 1, in what I hope are more advanced levels of this language as interest in the program develops, will be open to any student that wants to become proficient in a second language, whose path to proficiency does not require the development of the morphological and phonological skills that spoken languages do. In keeping with the dispositions of the vision of the graduate, this language will also connect our students to the culture and language of the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, an often underrepresented and unseen population here in Connecticut and in the United States as a whole. There are no prerequisites for American Sign Language because it is an introductory course offered to all students, and it would be in the same category as other introductory novice-level courses, along with all other Level 1 courses currently open to students at DHS. And ASL 1 will also give students an additional path to completing their one-year world language requirement and further continue their study in more advanced courses in the future. And I prepared this before I went to Boston for the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages Annual Conference. I was there for about a week, and I attended 25 different sessions, and they all had an American Sign Language interpreter. And so if we're talking about career pathways for our students when they leave DHS, I mean, I talked to almost every single one of them as much as I could and said, where did you go to school? And who employs you? Because I might have an ASL program at my high school next year. So I was blown away. The keynote speaker was Chef Jose Andres, who's currently doing a lot of work in Ukraine. He checked in with everyone on Zoom, and right next to him on stage was an ASL interpreter. So it was almost like serendipitous that these two things were happening at the same time. So I just want to make a plug for how visible this is in, in our, in the current world.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments by the board, and Mrs. McCann?
Um, yeah, sorry. Again, fine to do it when you're back with the curriculum committee, but just talking about sort of this in a larger context. I, I hear you in terms of potential job preparation, and I see in the, in the notes that there could be potentially a second series. But today, we're approving just one. So where would that sit in the life cycle of a student? How would we think about it in terms of, you know, it, it's just a one-credit course? What, what else, you know, how does it relate to the rest of their student experience? Would help me to see that in, in a greater context?
I can say something about that now.
Okay, sure.
Okay. So the reason why it's open to all students is because we've had interest from lots of different groups of students and their families, particularly with students who want to switch a language, want to take an additional one, but also from families whose students are struggling to meet the one-year world language requirement because of the program that they currently have, or that they have had since middle sex and going into DHS. So it, it's, it addresses the need that we have, that some, the need that some students have, but it also addresses the interest for some students who are looking to learn this language because they see it. They, they see it at concerts. They see it when they watch TED Talks. I mean, they, it's, it's very visible. And it just seems like the right time to propose it. And moving forward, as those students, I, I would imagine that most of the students that enroll will be freshmen and sophomores. And I will think about that more as I prepare for my February board update. But as they enroll and want to move on, the hope is that the program will grow.
Will you beg my indulgence for a second? You talked very clearly and compellingly about the, the connection to the deaf community. But ASL actually serves a lot of populations of folks who are nonverbal. So I was wondering if Shirley would just take a second to talk to us about some of the other populations who are also served.
And I did get a chance to speak to Christina also. It also, as many of you know, really does speak to nonverbal and an opportunity for students and young children who don't have vocal speech to be able to communicate using American Sign Language. It goes beyond using a technological device also because it's something that's very portable. It's with you. You can be, not have to reach for a device. So I think to our nonverbal students or students who really don't have not yet been able to demonstrate proficiency in oral communication, it gives them a form of communication. Also, many of you may be familiar with, many young parents use it with children during their toddler years. It's actually, many of you may have friends or yourselves have used it with young children prior to language, prior to two years old, being able to have expressive and receptive language. We also, I think Ms. McCann is pointing to the notion that we believe that language begets cognition. And if you're really looking for children to learn having a language, whether it's an oral language or a sign language, begets cognition, and that's why we're very committed to using it for, for child development. Thank you.
Okay, Katie.
Thank you, and thank you for this. I'm incredibly excited to see this on tonight's materials. It's been something that has been hoped for and asked for by a large population for a long time. The hearing impaired community is an obvious one, but we also have a significant portion of students who have language-based learning disabilities. We have students who give up their, their world language classes in the middle school in order to receive services and then face challenges to pick it back up in high school, to be able to be competitive on college applications. And this is a wonderful opportunity. I'm so excited to hear it. And there is interest for it. Yesterday, the middle school hosted their very first meeting of an ASL club that was organized by a student. So you certainly have rising people of interest. I did just want to ask how you, how you might project the growth of it? At what point do you think that if you offered year one next year with the following year, do you think you'd be able to offer year one and two? Do you have an idea on how you might grow the program?
Yes, I do. And it will, the, the nice thing about presenting my board update in February is that while we may not have full registration numbers, I will have an idea of where students will fall at that point. And then I will be able to project out into the future. But just like when we introduced Mandarin at the middle school at this time, two years ago, to have it start this year, at this time last year, to have it start this year, Dr. Dahlstrom and I presented a plan for where we would see the program potentially go, and I can do that for February. Absolutely.
And, and building on that, I think, so my, my question is, why Darien High School and not Middlesex Middle School or Elementary School? I don't know who was going to answer, but that's my question. Why, why, why wait until 10th grade if we can do it in fourth or seventh?
If I may just answer that, Mr. Marty, we have a need that since the Connecticut State Department has required that all students have at least one year of a language, there are many students we have currently who would like to really participate. I think Christina said earlier on in her presentation, because ASL does not have a phonological piece to it or morphology to it, it really gives access to students who may want to acquire a required world language as they begin high school. So the reason for starting in ninth grade would be to accommodate those students to meeting their requirement of graduation. Christina did have a chance to study other districts and how they phased in different levels of, of grades. She studied Ry City School District and the program over there, as well as Greenwich, and there may be some other districts also.
Two in New Jersey.
Thank you. And two in New Jersey. So you can start in ninth grade, and then you can move backwards to eighth grade as you move upwards. You can look at whichever, how to really have students access it. So sometimes you go forward and backwards at the same time.
So if I may ask at future, at, at future meetings, if we could see both forward projections and backwards projections. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, I'm sorry, Mrs. Parent.
Sorry, thank you. Are there faculty and staff members that are fluent in ASL, or would we be bringing in new people?
My hope is to hire someone who is a member of the deaf community to come and teach our students. It's actually, I learned this week that it is often frowned upon for a hearing person to take an ASL teaching job. So my hope is to hire someone from the outside to come in. Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the board question, comments. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the detail and the level of information.
And the last new course is the Guitar Ensemble, a course that half of the high school would like to sign up for as the adults. I'll invite Colleen Thompson to come forth.
You're not going to play? Yeah.
Guitar is not my instrument. Piano is not as portable. So we are proposing a new course for DHS called Guitar Ensemble. This would be a one-semester course, open to any student who wants to learn the guitar for the first time or continue any previous guitar studies in a group setting. The music department members believe that we should offer more options for students who want to get involved with music at DHS. All students in our general music classes are exposed to strummed instruments through a ukulele unit that we do in fifth grade. And we have recently revised our scope and sequence for the Middlesex Music Explorations class, and I presented that last year at a curriculum update to include a unit of guitar in each grade. So all students at MMS who choose music explorations will have some experience playing guitar. As of now, we only offer traditional ensemble classes such as band, chorus, and orchestra, and music electives, including music theory and music technology. We feel that a guitar ensemble fulfills the need to offer for students who might not have participated in a traditional ensemble in the past and might not typically choose to enroll in a music class, it might allow them an opportunity to take music at the high school level. it might allow them an opportunity to take music at the high school level. We're designing this class as a guitar ensemble so that students at any skill level can take the class and play at their own level. So if there are students who enroll who already have experience playing the guitar, they could take on a more challenging part, or they could learn to play in a different style, while students who are new to the instrument can start with simple chords and melodies. This also opens up opens students up to songwriting and composition. And, you know, again, I didn't prepare this part of my presentation previously, but talking about health and wellness throughout the meeting tonight, I think there's a lot of evidence that, you know, music and the arts and participation and that can really add to the health and wellness of of people in general and students as well. So I do think that this course could be beneficial for our students. And it is accessible to them as a one semester course and potentially could even be repeated as an ensemble class because it's not leveled. So just like a student could take band, orchestra, or chorus every year, they could essentially take guitar multiple times and have a different experience based on the repertoire that we choose and the other students who enroll in the class. So that is the gist.
Colleen, thank you very much. I'll just add that I got to sit next to you at the last concert in which my daughter participates in, and my hat's off to the programming. Not to get personal, but my daughter, who has special needs, is in chorus and she's flourishing. Challenge reading, but learns the music and belts it out on no particular note or tune. The inclusiveness of the group there and how they look after each other and the performances that they do are extraordinary. So thank you very much. And thank you. Word questions or comments? Mrs. Parent?
I just wanted to say thank you for incorporating the vision of the graduate in your description. I definitely found that was very helpful to tie it back to what we are all working so hard on. You all are all working so hard on, so thank you. I actually mentioned that to Ellen as we were talking about this. It was it was really helpful to tie it back. It's it really helps the vision of the graduate come alive to see how a music ensemble can appeal to those different tenants.
Great, Mrs. Warne?
I guess my only question would be, would we need to hire another teacher for this as well?
We don't believe so. We 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 offer semester classes. And so we have some flexibility based on enrollment and how we run the classes, whether we run two in one semester or multiple sections. So we believe we have the capacity within the department now to cover the semester class.
And the skill?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, yes. And and we we have some time to do some professional development. And it's actually on, it's on the agenda for January and February to do some group guitar work.
Thank you. Mrs. McCann?
You mentioned, you know, being able to access another cohort of students who aren't currently necessarily taking music today. I'd love to see that a little bit numerically, again, when you come back to the curriculum committee, sort of what percentage of our students are in music classes? What's that distribution look like? And how are we starting? And what is it? What does this add to the program?
Sure.
From a numbers perspective? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Sure, Mr. Morone?
Going back to AP Human Geography and AP Human History, I guess those two, and then I'll touch on a couple. Last spring, we heard a lot from our students who felt there's too much pressure in in having AP classes and dealing with that. And to paraphrase A Field of Dreams, if we build it, they will come. And opening up 11th, opening up European History to 10th graders, opening up AP Human Geography to juniors. Are we putting too much pressure on our students to take these more classes?
It's a fair question, Mr. Morone. And I think it's a conversation that we need to continue to have between our counselors, our students, and our families. You know, we've we've batted around this concept of limiting the number of AP courses that that a student can take. We have exceptional students at Darien High School who are ready and capable of taking multiple AP classes. And so I do think it's an individual conversation. I'm not a huge fan of making rules that I'm then gonna break because I, you know, we say that you may take only three. And then we have a student who who for whom their academics is really everything that they are focused on, who should be taking five AP classes. And so I really do think it's the importance of these ongoing conversations around well-being to say we need to have balance, we need as adults, and we need it as students as well. So.
Thank you. I have a couple other questions. I'll skip that one for now. The neuroscience, again, going back to, so these two kind of tie in together, I guess. Well, they're not related, but they are. So the neuroscience based on an extra lab, is there any concern that the scheduling will be too tight to have an extra lab and take up a class that we won't be able to take the neuroscience class with the lab? Would that constrict, if you understand my question?
It may constrict, it may constrict a little bit. But every other science class at the high school has these too many periods as a lab. So it's a fairly common balancing job for our counselors.
Okay, fair. And then my last question was on the African American and Black Studies and Latino and Puerto Rican Studies. And excuse my ignorance on this, but the state statute is we just have to offer the class? The students don't have to take the class?
That's right. So it must be offered as an entire year, but we can also offer it as two semester classes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Mr. Morone. Mrs. Warne?
I actually have a follow up on that, and I may have misheard you. But did you say that class was only offered to seniors?
That class is offered to juniors and seniors, right? Yes.
And is there, and but you said that didn't have a lot of people signing up because they have other classes. Is there a reason, is is it not appropriate for freshmen, sophomore?
I think the the belief is that we would want to have students concurrently in American History at least to align with the content of the course.
Mrs. Parent?
Can you please just refresh my memory? There was a good enrollment when it was a semester class, right?
Yes, yeah, one semester ran with with a 15 students and it was wonderfully received, yeah.
Dr. Tranberg and Ellen, just in my continued theme of priorities, we offer a lot up at the high school. It's a high performing district. I love to your point of we need to stress the individual conversations with these students. We need to constantly think about the stress and the anxiety with these students. But I'd like to also hear at some point in time, a little more detail as we're adding, or we're changing some names here, but we're adding, but is there anything we're taking away? Like, does the process include looking at, there's a lot of need to have, there's a lot of nice to have? I think as we continue to add to the district, let's always true back to, you know, making sure what we're offering has the right enrollment in it, has the right focus in it. And, you know, I hear internally and externally, you know, we have more offerings than some small colleges and universities. Which I don't think is a bad thing. I get the feedback from folks that go off to college from this district and they feel incredibly prepared at the schools they're at, so that's kudos to this district. But I just ask you to always think along those lines. It's it's always good to do an evaluation of is there anything that can come off?
And and I guess you should know that when we register, the students vote with their feet in many ways, right? And so we look at those numbers. If a course only fills to nine, we put that aside and ask those students to re-register. So it there, we do remove courses from the catalog. So the ones that have come up, just for example, this semester or this year, our Contemporary Poetry hasn't run for five years, it's coming off the books. Page and Stage, which was one of the new courses years ago that Francis brought forward in the second semester literature course. Writer's Workshop, which was replaced previously with Writing with Purpose. So courses do come off that are no longer being selected.
Thank you.
Because that really muddies the water when they go to register. If one student signs up.
Good.
They're not making a good choice, so.
Yeah, thank you for the info.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to presentation and discussion on October 1st, District Enrollment Report and Projections. Mr. Michael Zubba from SLAM Collaborative. Thank you for for bearing with us through the meeting. Appreciate you being here.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Welcome.
All right, make sure I can get the microphone and clicker set up. It's good to be here. I went back to my notes, last time we had presented and done the enrollment projection update was back in the the fall of 2020. So right when first year coming back from COVID, had a lot of assumptions, talked a lot about the direction enrollment was going. As I get through tonight's presentation, it's good to see that our projections had performed well overall. But we were going to give a full update of everything that was in that last report and looking ahead 10 years of what the enrollment looks like for Darien Public Schools. So without further ado, we'll get right into it. So part of our process for developing enrollment projections going back about 15 years has been looking at a high, medium, and low model. That's what we're looking at on the screen. Back in 2020, we identified the medium model as the one that we thought was the best fit for the data that we were looking at. And it turned out to be the case, we were within four students overall for the entire K-12 from our projection two years out. K performed very well. That's something in Darien that we've been pretty proud of is that our K projection performed really well. However, we did see a greater level of immigration, especially in the lower elementary grades than we had originally projected when we looked at the actual data. So that's something that we wanted to unpack a little bit more. Then we saw a little bit less enrollment over in the middle and high schools. So that's something we also wanted to look at a little bit more as part of this update. Getting into the overall school performance, looking at individual elementary schools going two years out, they were on par for what we expected overall, except for Ox Ridge, that actually came in yearly 60 students high. I know we always joke in our architectural office, you build it, they will come, especially during a pandemic when we had a housing boom. We even had a more really optimistic projection, they're trending to the higher side. And still with the different circumstances that came in, it was one of those numbers that arrived much higher than what we had projected overall. But but the other elementary schools were on par considering it was two years out where we have projected there. A few data points that came out in the past year, worse status finally coming out, just been delayed as part of as part of the COVID staffing and everything that went with all the different demographic and enrollment shifts that COVID brought about the country. But overall, Darien grew in the last 10 years, from 2010 to 2020, about 3.6%. What's not counted in there is the movement that we've seen post sort of the census. So as the census was being fielded throughout 2020, especially through the spring, this data is silent to any of the movement that's happened since then. Coming out, we made the American Community Survey, which is kind of like a branch of the census, is going ahead and finding estimates that hopefully are proving accurate and kind of bridge that gap, not only in Darien, but across all the communities that we work in in order to be able to get a better understanding of what the current profile in each community looks like kind of post-COVID. Looking at birds going forward, I think one of the things that really jumped out is Darien, like so many communities throughout Connecticut, was on a pretty steady decline birth-wise. Even leading up to COVID, you had a little bit of a bird bump and a dip. But the last two years of birds, 21 as well as 22, which is a partial year that we extrapolate out for, we're seeing some pretty big upticks in birds overall there. I could swim and see, but I'm sure you have a copy in front of you. Try to fake what I think the numbers are, but I believe we ended up in 22, 2022, around 263 birds. And that was based on January through September. And we extrapolate out on historic average for the last three months. It's been a pretty reliable methodology, but I think the takeaway here is that the last two years, we've seen a bird uptick. We did look at some different demographic models using the female child very age for the census, as well as fertility rates, but they all overshot when we backtested those. So we relied back on mathematical models that we've been using to project the three different bird lines. You'll see they're in the blue, green, and red going forward. But really, they're following the last six or seven years' historic trend there. But it's not demographically based, just due to that big disconnect with the census data. I will say that in your package, the chart on the upper right, I had to replace that older one in there. The newer one, left is the one that's in this copy, and I sent it reflects the year-to-date for January all the way through October, actually. So for the home sales there, we're seeing that the earlier extrapolation was a little bit off. So now for 2022, we're seeing a bit more of a total sale tip. That's aligning with some of the other data points that I checked. But your sale has really peaked high in 2021. 2022, we're seeing across the board, a lot of communities, seeing a little bit of a downturn there, partially supply-driven, partially price-driven, as well as, you know, we're seeing some volatility in the lending market. But your median sale price in that 2022 September is just below 1.7 million for single-family homes. That's up 34% versus the pre-pandemic number. So that does begin to have an impact overall on just the total number of sales in the community. But overall, the last three years, if they're still elevated from where you were, really the prior seven or eight years there, getting back to, you know, pre-recession levels in the early 2000s for total home sales there. So that's definitely had a good churn in the community. Working through your housing permits, what you'll see is where we have the darker color, yellow or mustard, those are indicative of multifamily units. And there's a little bit of a lag, so these are reported through the DECD. You'll see in 2022 where they don't break down, single-family and multifamily, we just have a gray bar there. That does not account for any demolition, demolition lag about 10 months there. If you look at that data, and but overall, the talking with the town planner, we're still seeing that trend continue where single-family, we're having a lot of demos repaired out, rebuilt. So it's kind of netting out where we use CD units coming through those multifamily complexes, which we'll touch on in the next couple of slides. So looking at the recent under-construction plan of the oncologists, it typically has a pipeline. We work with the town planning department to be able to get status updates as we look to do our projection update, identify the location of all of those units, assign them, especially for the elementary schools, assign them to an intended zone, so we have an idea of where we're going to be that enrollment. And obviously for the middle and high school, they all end up at the same school, so we don't have to do that for there. But what we'll really focus on here are those larger units. You recognize that there's some smaller developments, typically a half dozen or so of smaller units. They've happened over time, they get baked in for lack of better terms for our projection model overall. So what we do is we kind of focus on some of those external ones that are a little bit larger scale. So this is the October 26, 2022 update from the planning and zoning department, looking at the total projects that are in that pipeline, categorizing them by recently completed, those that are partially still under construction, those that have yet to be built, I have three main categories. And then working through that, we've identified the ones that have the greatest influence on generating school-aged children. So as we look at some of those multifamily developments, we want to ensure that we're counting for those. And looking at the construction schedule, looking at what we believe the construction schedule is, the planning and zoning department there, and identifying when those ships are likely to come online. So this is just a list of the latest information talking about 160 condo units at the corporate district that exists in Tocany. Looking at the phases for that, about phase one, basically complete or under construction, scheduled to be completed in 2023. And then the latter phase, there's a little window room there. And then it's 122 apartment units at Darien Commons, speeds into Royal District. We're looking at phase one, they're expected to be completely finished this year, remainder completed by mid-year, next year. And then we have 50 units approved that are running highest. It's not expected to be completed any sooner than the fall of 2024. And then about 60 units over at Drake Park, Parkland Drive, which is really an opposite version of Tocany. And I believe that was appealed, but that was recently resolved in the last few weeks or so. So we do have that actor recently reflected in our update there. And this is just what we're looking at, student generation for those. So look, we use various housing multipliers in order to be able to get our student generation out. I've been comping units in Darien for about seven years of that. I have to take a five-year average of students that are generated with the multifamily here. And then compare those with two different sets of multipliers in order to be able to get that estimated student generation, which I'm showing on the chart here. I believe that's 163 units, 25 units there we go. And then we break it down according to the ESI multipliers based on whether they're going to be elementary, middle, or high school. So that's kind of our our most. And then we break it down according to the ESI multipliers based on whether they're going to be elementary, middle or high school. So that's kind of our, our most support for those units overall. So what we're doing for these units is based on the best information, we know anything if you're expecting to get construction, residential, civic, school construction, everything is a little bit of a flux. So we try to be mindful of that, but also try to ensure that we have a realistic schedule out of the basic design. A lot of the units based on what we're seeing are getting baked in, I'll call that sort of the midpoint of our projections. And so as I get into the individual elementary school projections, you'll see where we're having the greatest impact of some of these developments that last for five or 10 years in that window there, kind of by, uh, by the units coming online.
So I'll ask you to pause there for a moment.
Sure.
And, uh, a lot of information, a lot of good data. Thank you. But I'll, I'll ask you to pause there. I think it's a good natural break and see where there may be some board questions or comments. Mrs. McGee.
Can you just do that last slide more slowly? You and Rich can compete for who can go through the numbers faster.
Rich wins.
So what this is, this is looking at, um, is this the right, my next slide?
Yes.
Yeah, we're back to, okay. So these are, these are the major developments that, oh, wow. Thank you. Thank you. I was just faking it for a little while. That's a big help. All right. So these are developments that we sort of add student generation to all of them. So when we're adding external students outside of our mathematical models, so it's when we know we're going to have students generated from these developments. This is what we're developing for what we're called, um, our estimated number of students. So we have 163 total students overall. We have them assigned to each development. We have those developments graphed, relocated, um, so we know what elementary schools they're going to feed into. Um, and then we have them disaggregated by our middle and then highs are two other categories. So we had about 80 K5 students, um, 35 middle school students and just under 50 high school students. And what we're anticipating is that, um, the first students from these four developments are likely start impacting our projections somewhere in the 23, 24 window, um, school, school year window, I'll call it. Um, so what we do is we go through it and we phase in. So we're ultimately reaching, and I don't remember exactly what year it was, but I think it was year eight. We're phasing in that 163 students by year seven or eight. I'm pretty sure it was year eight. So saying that construction's completed, certificates of occupancy are issued, um, everything's either leased up and, um, getting families in there. And then ultimately they come to what we call sort of maturity where you start to get student generation. Where either there's students moving in or some of the younger grades, they may be students that are born in the units. But that, it would really fall towards the end of that window. Um, but that's where we start adding these students into our projections. And we add them into all three models.
Okay. And to get to those total students generator, you have Darien specific multipliers. So what you're saying is you take the total number of units, you've got some specific, uh, multipliers that are based on trends in Darien, and that's how you get to the actual generated numbers.
Yeah, and usually based on bedrooms, um, the bedroom split of the unit. So looking at how many studios, how many ones, how many twos, as well as type of units where it's a market, whether it's market or affordable, looking at a percent that is affordable. And then, um, we'll dive into it and then student generation. In town, I believe the two comps that I use are the heights as well as Avalon. And then I basically augment that with the tutor multiplier that we purchased, um, but they're not specific to town, obviously. That's why we look at it locally and then we kind of look at the numbers and see what makes sense from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could you do the, could you do us a favor? I think you said you're going to update one other slide. Is there any way you could update this slide to put the school next to the development name? I think this is a good recap and gives us a good overview at a high level. So I think, but people looking at it, I mean, most people know, but I think if you could just add the school that's associated with the elementary school.
We should put it before the math.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Seeny.
So I, I understand the multiplier effect by, um, yeah, looking at the number of newly constructed apartments, but is there any second derivative, derivative study in which you look at typically the empty nester that, you know, I know, uh, Corbin especially is, is marketing to, you know, where they move out of a home with four bedrooms. Basically downsized, then create a, an open home that might be more attractive to, um, you know, families with young children. Is there any way to analyze that? Or, I mean, I guess you'd have to go back to Avalon and see if there was.
Yeah, you would have to have the census of who's selling and moving. It's really, oh, it's a lot of that. But I, I do agree with the premise that that does happen sometimes, um, where you have something opens up a town and it's suitable for empty nester or attractive. And then that speeds up the availability of homes that would be the traditional family home, I'll call it, right? Adding more to the market there. Which it does seem like the market is a bit limited based on supply. We've seen it a little bit of a strength, but, um, to try to go through and analyze that, that was, that'd be a heck of a lot.
I mean, um, you know, if you look at two of the more, more recent or the, I look at Corbin, I look at the heights, I mean, they're, they're being age targeted away from families, if you will. And you look at Kensit two years ago, that was age targeted. Now I know there's still kids there, but at the same time, they are targeting people moving in, you know, downsizing empty nesters. So it'd be, it's going to be interesting to watch that play out.
Yes, it will be.
Any other board questions on this section? Mr. Brown.
I'll just lay the numbers here really quick in, um, sort of the slide before this one and just doing some quick math. So it looks like across the middle school, the high school and elementary, it's probably about 12 kids per grade. And then just basically do a quick and dirty between Royal, two projects in Royal, one in Tocany. You're looking at, say, eight per grade going to Royal and four going to Tocany, just based on the grid. Are we going to get that detail when we move forward to the schools?
I, I haven't rolled into the entirety of the projections.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sure.
This is your, and it's kind of interesting. Your, yours is much different than when you plot out the state or a lot of other cities. So this is your 74, what was that? 50 years, like?
Yep.
Yeah, we're going to be generous tonight. We'll just call it 50 years.
I know all too well.
So this is looking way back and then look and then bring it to, to kind of the present day. So what we see in the present day, and I think it's kind of actually the last like 15 years. Really almost everybody else has had a big dip here. So when we go and describe the graphics in the larger scale, looking at either the county, um, state, nation. You always have this boom, then you have the big boss, and you have this like echo baby boom. And then you always have like a baby boss, some echo baby boss near summer area. I never had that. So when you kind of peak, you've just had a little bit of slow decline. Um, so very interesting to me, demographics all the time that you're one of the only communities that I've seen that in. Um, but what we did see is if you look really close to squint, it was just a little bit of a dip that first year of, um, COVID back in 2020, and then the enrollment has kind of rebounded a little bit to get back on that trajectory. So this is something we've just been tracking for a number of years. This is just a look at your K5 enrollment. Um, you had your, you're on a little bit of a decline, yet you bottomed out in 2020. You had a bit of a rebound and right now you've been around 21, 100 or so, um, K5 students overall. Um, taking a deeper look at that K5 enrollment. So this is a chart that we didn't have last time. So we have net migration for the elementary schools. So when we compare grades one through four versus grades two through five the next year, um, we track and call that kind of a net migration analysis. Looking at those cohorts, how they perform year to year, um, going back historically, the red bars below the line show that you've had that outmigration up until 2019, 20s. So in 2019, 20, you had some net immigration dropped off a little bit in the first year of COVID, shot up in 21, 22, and then dropped back off a little bit. But when you look back historically, um, you really didn't have a pattern of having several years in a row and immigration, you were moving in the opposite direction of having net outmigration. So when we did our modeling in 2020, um, when we were lower on the elementary schools, we were factoring in a bit of that net outmigration that historically had occurred to occur. And you bought the trend and you had that immigration. Um, so that explains a little bit of that disconnect for those gains of the lower elementary grades over that time. And it's really, that's something from the housing market and bringing in a lot of new families really helps kind of fuck that trend going forward. This is a look at your individual elementary school historic enrollment. And, um, over the last three years, we've had some enrollment growth. You'll see the biggest enrollment growth I described earlier was in Ox Ridge. That's the aqua colored line that's there, um, on that upward trajectory since 1920. But you'll also see that we've had some, you know, different variations there. Uh, with some modest growth in Tocany, hit just below 3%. Homes have been pretty stable and Royal, um, declined at about 8%, Kennedy declined at about 2.6% over the last, the last three years. So some different fluctuations there across the different, um, elementary schools. This is just a look at your middle school grades, um, you know, from your recent peak, you've been declining, but ever so slowly, um, to get to your present enrollment there. Looking at the high school, it's really been very stable over the last few years, um, about 1,400 to 25 students average over the last five years. But, um, really stable enrollment overall, but you look at that long-term trajectory, it's just kind of a slow and steady climb and you've kind of flattened off over the last few years there. This is our, our immigration analysis. So, um, what we do here to be able to generate the stack bar charts is, um, we do a tracking of student IDs. So every year I request detailed information, um, through your data services and IT of looking for, um, your PSIIS extracts where we can then, um, track students, um, by their state ID. Completely anonymous. I don't know what they correspond to, except that what grade they're in. But what it does is, um, we can actually track new district students by identifying whether or not students were in Darien public schools at any point in time in the recent, um, you know, past prior to that school year. So it gives us a really good indication of, um, new to district students is what we call it. So what jumps out to me when I look at our entirety of all your grades, which is with that little chart in the upper left with the elementary and the green on the bottom of the stacked bar, um, the blue is represented in the middle, the mustard color is representing the high school. So, um, getting into that 21, 22, um, you had a lot of immigration. Almost 250 new to district students. Um, but what surprised me when I went through and I ran it back then, I think that's 17 and 18, you had a very similar number. Uh, albeit you had more elementary students in 21, 22, but you still had a lot of net in my, a lot of new to district students there. What also jumped out to me was in 22, 23, that number also dropped back a little bit. Um, so you had one of your lowest numbers that second year. But when we began really kind of looking at those, we're seeing, especially in the elementary grades, that middle bar stacked bar chart there is that the lower grades have the most new to district students. And we only get this for first fifth. Every kindergarten, we assume is new to district. So we don't go through the process of tracking that, but, um, really looking there and seeing those larger stacked bars in the lower elementary grades shows us where we have additional students over what we would have normally had just through our natural growth process. Looking at the middle school, the numbers there have been very steady over the last few years, just under 50 new to district students there. And then looking at the high school, the numbers have been very steady there over the last couple of years as well. Um, this is taking all this information, including the home sales I described earlier, which we get through the warm group based on address and then, um, address matching the new to district students to look at the hotspots and see if there's any correlation there between, um, where your students are and, um, the housing sales hotspots. So what we see here is that there is some correlation, but also that we have many more home, home sale hotspots than we do new to district students. And when you really kind of dive in, especially the, some of them in the center of town, just the type of housing that we're flagging for the hotspot analysis, um, to the earlier point of, well, you know, these really don't generate students. Yeah, a lot of housing doesn't. So that's where we have the big disconnect there overall. Um, but it's a good exercise to go through. So this is just looking at that same new to district student analysis based out of the individual elementary schools. And I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I will point out that, um, some of the bubble that we saw, especially the last few years, um, over in Ox Ridge, and has been the new to district students there. So, um, we've gone back to 16, 17, doing this analysis. And our highest have typically been, um, Tocany, Ox Ridge, but also our largest new to district cohort was in 21, 22 at Ox Ridge in that light purple, pastel purple color there of almost 50. Um, so that's the highest one that we've had, um, reported. So that just shows sort of where you had that push of students coming in right during COVID there. But then in 22, 23, that number had dropped back off to kind of that historic average. So we're looking at that as being a one-time kind of big push there, but still having, um, increased immigration there. But really looking at that big push in that one year there. All right.
Pause again. Thank you very much. Questions, comments? A lot of good data. Keep moving. All right. Good. We'll keep moving. Thank you.
We use a cohort survival. What we make some modifications to it. It's what you use for construction grants or really anything to get, um, rate-specific, school-specific enrollment projections. Um, this is pretty typical to, if you've seen it in my presentation in the past, I will do a lot of time on it. What I will spend some time on is our, uh, heavy assumptions. Um, last time we had a bulk number, which is pretty much just a planned number. Kind of little speed they will come with 150, we lowered that to 108. Also for our high, medium and low projections, um, each of those are fed off those different bird models. So our high projections are fed off our high birth model, which averages 260 births in the future that we don't know. So in order to do 10-year elementary projection, you have to project a certain number of birth years. For the medium model, we're projecting 253, um, birds there feeding into that on average. And then the low projection model has 34. But I think the key points here, um, the high projections assume that they're going to grow with student immigration of about 1%, which is slightly above your historic average. Um, I look at the last five years, 2.75, um, with the last few COVID years kind of pushing that number up a little bit higher. The medium model assumes that you'd be slightly below that. So it's really kind of taking a blend of your pre-COVID with COVID. They're giving us what I feel is kind of a good model there in the lowest, so they're going to have really low immigration, um, something that reflects 10 years prior to COVID. So, um, really, you know, actually 10 years prior to 1920 as well. So it's really assuming some low immigration there, something that we don't see as being very likely. Your birthday day shot up, so you're at about 1.8. So for every 100 births, five years later, you get 180 kindergartners. Tracking back to your recent past, that's the highest number you've had, um, reported over the last two years. We'll see on the right some of those estimates of migration that I talked about where going back to the earlier part of the 2000s, um, you had some outmigration across the elementary schools. Show those little stacked red bars. Um, now we're seeing, um, now we're seeing net immigration across the board over the last few years. So it's really kind of balancing that going forward with our outlook of the next 10 years. This is just a descriptor of where kindergartners come from, um, something that we can see especially in the survey area across Connecticut. With, um, if you were just to use a static birth decay and assuming that, you know, your birth decay is the same every year regardless of housing issue, the class size. You could, um, way overestimate what your enrollment is going to look like. Um, back 20 years ago, a large majority of your kindergartners were born in town. It's not something we're seeing anymore. Um, as you can see in the bar chart, um, that greenish color represents your K component from immigration. Um, more and more of your K are resulting from families migrating, moving to your town. Kids and so, and then the chart on the right just represents our best fit line that we've been using for birth decay. As you can see, all of your birth years tracking back almost 20, um, years, looking at that historic relationship of falling on that best fit line. That's a testament to why our K projections from the pandemic held true. And we were within four, um, two years out on that. It's just, um, the methodology that we use there, methodology that we're employing forward.
Can I ask just a quick question on one of those?
Yes, Mr. Seeny.
Just the birth decay, immigration. I mean, if I look at those bars and, you know, births were such a larger percent, you know, in their earlier years, is that also a function of just age demographics in which people are having children too?
It, it is part of that. I think it's just a new family of like, uh, buy the house, you have the kids versus you have the kids by the house.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think a lot of that. So if you try to use a methodology you have to get like four years ago, it doesn't work anymore.
Yeah. Okay. That's kind of the key point. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. So our three projection models, um, we have a pretty good alignment. First five here, both with the high and medium kind of walking in lockstep there. Um, I believe they're both at five years out and that's K-12 only, um, 47, 37, 46, 90 for both of those with the low model trailing at about 4,500. Those two models stay in pretty good agreement going forward. Um, so we feel pretty good about that. I think. I think we're still basically benchmarking for the top of medium. But especially if you're talking about facilities, if you're looking at your elementary schools, you may want to use that blue line with the blue model there for space planning purposes, just to be a little bit more conservative, even though we did see a little bit of a housing downturn on this patch here. It still wouldn't be a bad idea to track against that. But overall, we're still seeing some enrollment growth. This is pretty well aligned. I went back and looked at our projections for 2020 and then ran to 2030. And overall, we were with about 240, 250 students within that range for the entirety of K-12. So even with all the changes that we had, it's still kind of a model to track and at a very similar trajectory overall. This is just representing the different grade groupings. What we're seeing, now let's go right to the K-5. It's going to increase by about 12% over the next decade, reaching almost 2,200, I mean, 2,360 by 2032, 33. So a bit of a notable growth there, just over 200 and some students there. Middle schools projected to increase very slowly. You're going to exceed 1,100 students towards the back half. Really slow growth there and then high school enrollment projected to climb by 5%. And then slowly rebound to about 1,400 students in the back half for projection to rise there. Looking at the individual elementary schools, I broke this down into different windows. So we're seeing really growth across the board in the first five years. And this is where we begin to kind of play out some of the changes in the persistency ratio. So changes in the underlying demographics of what we've seen. We've seen some different larger cohorts come in at some different grades because we had projected original. So that kind of funnels all of that through. But I think the first five years, we're looking at Token E being one of the largest growers there at just under 60. Royal's going to grow by about 40 students over that timeframe. Ox Ridge is going to grow an additional 11, homes four. And Henley, I have just under 30. And then in the back half is where some of those multipliers generation really start to kick in. We see a greater level of growth, especially in Token E. Royal, we're looking at about 80 student growth there. Two dozen students at home to Knox Ridge and Henley at just under 50 there overall. So really kind of flash forward and go ahead to 2032, 33, you're looking at having two, two schools just over 500, Ox Ridge at 526. And then you're looking at three schools in fours with two right around 460 and Royal right around 410 students. So some growth in those elementary buildings for your space planning purposes. And this is just looking at a percent change annually over time. I won't spend any time on that last slide. It's just our overall takeaways that we think we touched on. But I think the only thing I really may not have touched on is in the next year. So next year's K-12 enrollment projected increased by about 1%. Elementary increases by two and then the middle school increases by one. Our review of the lesson in high school increased by 1%. And then I touched on the first five, next five for a lot of the other ones that we made considerations. And then in the back of the deck, there's just, it depends if you've had all of this detail there. I won't spend any time going through the other low and high model as well as all the individual school projections there. So I'll turn it back over to the board if there's any questions on this last part of it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown.
So I kind of want to ask in jest if we should have the portables towed over to Token E. But more seriously, I actually would like to. More seriously, Joe, as you're looking through HHS and we're going through the process of integration, not looking for answers, but just talk about how you incorporate these numbers through that work.
So we're following the state process, which has us project out eight years. And so the numbers that we submitted were based on our last set of projections eight years out. We use the high model, not the medium. But I will certainly compare them to what's here. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Seeny.
One of the things that surprised us in enrollment this year was the, you know, losing kids to private schools. And, you know, I don't know how, how you look at that trend or if you can look at that trend. Maybe you could comment.
Yeah, we picked up on something we do look at. And it was so tough to kind of carry that over then for 10 years. So what I do with that is I look at the grades that you typically use them at and then look at it and try to pick a larger swath of data there to try to say that, well, this not one time, but is this something that's going to be shorter term? When you try to like, take what happened in a given year and extrapolate it up to 10 years, you always end up in the far direction of the other. So it's something that we track, I try to moderate it and I look back at history at different things that have happened. And I see exactly when you had out migration there, try to be a little bit mindful of that as I project forward.
Were we outliers there?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. Bass.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. With the past few years being kind of wonky, is it? I kind of look at it as, is, is it possible that we had sort of a few years worth of in-migration in a year's time? Like, did people change, people who might've moved to the suburbs a couple of years down the road accelerated their timeline? And then now things are sort of course correcting? Would that make sense as a theory? Ish?
I like the ish.
I'll put the ish on that. Right? So yeah, it could be some of that. And also it could be some people who've never thought about moving to the suburb, moving to the suburb.
Right. And I would think that a lot of people changed priorities and lifestyles to some degree, which has to make it harder to approach this with the same assumptions that you would have used five years ago, for example.
Exactly. And everybody's a little different too. So we're seeing different trends at Westport and the York area.
Okay.
They've added 100 plus elementary students each year of COVID, like 120, 120, 120. And they're on a trajectory of just kind of needing to add a little bit more, especially with their births increased by 100, their births increased by 100. But then other communities are very similar. So I'm working at Ridgefield as well. I've had for years and years and it's kind of like runs to similarities there. But I think to your point of saying with the housing market, did we push through three years worth of potential buyers in like a year and a half? I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's going to come to bear really. Or if it's just we had our buyers, some, some may have jumped a little bit early, but some who may not have moved to the suburbs like so quickly did so. And I think what we're going to see, and I'm just kind of speculating on that, is just that we're, this is going to have a little bit longer lasting impact than that. You're going to have new families and a lot of new families move without kids. Or they have kids that are zero to three, say. So there's going to be an impact to this in the next few years, not just the kids that arrived in the seats already. I think it's kind of, even if sales kind of drop back down to your recent historic average, you're still going to have a little bit higher immigration just because, you know, families have moved here. That wouldn't otherwise be here in such a compressed time. And that's going to take a little while to kind of work its way out. And that's kind of how I developed the projections here.
Mr. Brown.
Just, just following that up. So I guess we want to think about accelerated and think maybe there's going to be a mean reversion. But then we look at some of the numbers, we're kind of sticky over time too, right? So probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's probably not going to be a big pendulum swing back.
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Maroni.
Yeah. So kind of piggybacking on Mr. Brown's comments about Token E is so Avalon, if I'm correct, is in the homeschool district and it's being bused to Token E. So would we want to look at busing those, putting those kids back into their true home district at home since Token E is expected to grow by 80 students in the next few years? And the question is as well is how do we go about doing that? If we wanted to take that on.
Did you just bring up the R word?
I think he did. But he didn't, he didn't even say it.
I don't know if it's a total R word or just that one particular.
In our.
Which has been.
In our with an asterisk.
So Mr. Maroni, I appreciate the question. It's on my mind too. And I think in the interest of time, I think we'll have the administration take that question away. And I think it's a, something that I think I'd rather get ahead of and at least start the conversation once we look at these numbers. If there's an opportunity to have that discussion around moving people around. But thank you for the question. Any other board questions? Mrs. Parent.
I think my biggest takeaway from this, and thank you for the work. This must've taken hours and hours. So thank you for this. Um, just in, in 10 years, it looks like middle sex is going to grow by, I don't know, 80-ish kids. And to me, that's four classrooms and we're already tight over there. So where are those four classrooms coming for, from? And, you know, I'm just putting that thought out to the universe.
You're just, you're just throwing out there another building?
Throwing out there, maybe people might want to think about another, you know, fun adventure in building land.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Any other? Mrs. McCammon.
I'm just comparing what's in the specs for HHR to what's in these projections. They're pretty similar, which is good news. But can you break out the 10-year high enrollment projections by building for us? You don't have to do it now, but I just want to be able to compare it directly to our projections. I didn't see it in the packet. Is it, is it further back? Oh, I missed it. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. So here's the by grade grouping and that's, I'll wind up trying to look at that. So here's it by school, by grade.
Of course you have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Great question. Any other thoughts or comments? Great. Well, thank you for staying through most of our agenda. Thank you for the presentation and the work. We appreciate it. And great. Now, thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. We will move on to presentations of updated five-year capital plan. Mr. Monret, Kevin, thank you for hanging with us. Most appreciated. So I think in the interest of time and everyone's day jobs tomorrow, I know everyone on the board has, has run through this, but if you want to hit on the highlights and then we'll open it up to more questions.
Sure thing. So in the pack this evening is the first thing that'll jump off your page.
Do you move that microphone or just speak a little louder? Thanks, Kevin.
Is that a little bit better?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So the first thing that you'll notice in the capital five-year plan is that some of these projects were presented last year under Mr. Lynch. And we've rolled them forward because that's appropriate this time. But taking a look at it, some of the projects were either removed or changed in their fiscal year. To Mrs. Parent's point just a few moments ago, you'll notice some very large capital projects looming in the distance for the middle school and high school. Because as we're going through the HHR and Ox Ridge building committees, we're starting to look at middle and high school in that capacity. For this upcoming year, you'll see our focus is mainly on the middle and high school because of what's happening with the elementary schools at this time. Sods at middle school, for example, renovations to the gym wall padding, et cetera. Those are new adds that weren't necessarily presented last year. Also new this year is the security cameras at the high school, additional cameras that could either be repurposed or purchased new that we had from Ox Ridge. And then the audio visual upgrades to the theater, which Colleen behind me has worked extensively on to come up with a plan to get our theater upgraded to incorporate more technology and sound equipment.
Thank you, Kevin. Open it up to any board questions or comments. Who would ask Dr. Adley, Kevin, have you looked at and incorporated in here, anything that's come out of the KERMA audit? We have not seen that yet. That might be some of the soft stuff, fencing, landscaping, stuff like that, but anything?
No, I would like to, we have reviewed that with the administration and KERMA has, is going back to do edits and revisions from that meeting. So I'm waiting to actually receive it. There's, there's nothing more that's been included in this that has come from, from that, from that audit.
Good. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Happy Thanksgiving to you.
The only thing, sorry, Dennis, do you want to add from a facilities perspective that the projects, while there are projects in the, in the long-term capital plan for the middle school, the high school and Token E library, that those are still under discussion? And so.
Yes, sorry.
That's a good point. Thank you. Yeah, that's a good point.
So those are just approximate numbers for this point in time, but they're not.
More, more.
All right. We'll move along to discussion and possible acceptance on Contemplated Gift and Blue Wave Booster Club. Dr. Adley and Mr. Manfredonia.
Hi, Chris. You're, you're on deck.
I'm here. Thank you, everybody.
Chris, give us the high-level overview.
Contemplated gift to the girls' basketball program at Darien High School. It's a nice to have something that would not be supported by the Board of Ed budget for travel bags and warm-up tops and bottoms to wear prior to games.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manfredonia. Mr. Brown.
Just like to very briefly say thank you to the Blue Wave Booster Club for their generosity and make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I appreciate that. I will also, on behalf of the board and the administration, say a big thank you to the Blue Wave Booster, Blue Wave Booster Club. Again, incredible generosity for, for our students. Second by Mr. Maroni, all those in favor.
The other valve.
All right. We'll move on to discussion and thank you, Mr. Manfredonia. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you all. We'll see you Thursday. Roll waves.
Yes. Onward to the Turkey Bowl. Discussion and possible action on proposed Middlesex Field Trip Quiz Bowl Regional Tournament, Mr. Romeo.
Mr. Mario is there. And this was just one on the, normally we do these in October. And this is just an additional one that we'd like support for.
So, Mr. Romeo, I have a motion by Mr. Brown. Board conversation or discussion, second. Mrs. McCammon, all those in favor. Thank you for hanging with us. Pretty routine request, but thank you for all you do around that. And best of luck to our students as always.
All right. Thank you. I just want to say hi to John and Swaha, two of my favorite students from the past and I hope you guys are doing well.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family.
All right.
We will move on to further review and possible action on proposed 2023, 2024 budget calendar.
Mr. Chairman, there's really one revision that I have. It's, and it's really a revision to the order on Super Saturday here. So the rundown that you have in front of you is Darien High School, Fitch, Middlesex Elementary Schools, and then the athletics. For different reasons, I need to move that to high school, Fitch, athletics, then middle school. So it's really moving RC 11 up in the, just up in the order. Okay. It's not a big change.
Okay. Any questions, Mrs. McCammon?
Yeah, just we need, wanted to rename that one work session just because it's confusing to the community, right? So I think we were going to call it, maybe.
Which date?
Which one? Works. Okay, sorry. I think between tabs.
Is it the Board of Finance workshop?
The Board of Finance one, which we have currently on March 30th. And I think we wanted to call it something like Board of Finance Review and Discussion of BOE Budget. So we get rid of the work session, which is confusing to folks.
The Board of Finance Review and Discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Brown.
I would just like to suggest the tour of schools on March 18th, early Saturday morning, March the 18th. Perhaps be reconsidered for a different Saturday.
Okay.
Large Irish contingent on the board.
Yeah. All right. Let's, we'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Yes.
Hang on. We, this is the 17th, Jim?
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Of March.
January.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's go and make those updates. All right. If you want to move this forward with those updates, we have a motion to approve the proposed 2023, 2024 budget calendar with those modifications and a possible consideration of the Saturday tour of schools. See if that can be moved around at all. All right. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Bass, all those in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to discussion and possible action on approval of the District Director of Security and the six school security officers. I will turn that over to Dr. Adley.
So just consistent with the Director of Mental Health, there was discussion that we should actually be seen to be creating the positions, first of all, before any transfer appropriations or any other allocation of funds.
Yeah. Does everyone understand that? I worked, I actually went over this with Mr. Mooney, and he was comfortable with the way we originally proposed it, and then felt this adds clarity to it also. So, Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, and I just like to comment that, you know, we're doing this now fully knowing where the funding is coming from.
Correct.
After a vote, after this. So, you know, we, I don't think we had a clear idea where the funding, if we were going to get the funding originally, and that's why we're doing it tonight.
Yep. No, I appreciate that. And then we'll hear a little more clarity around the funding and the surplus in the next discussion. So may have a motion to approve the District Director of Security, one FTE, and six school security officers, six FTEs. Mrs. McCammon, second by Mr. Maroni, all those in favor. Yes.
Discussion? Just had something I'd like to say before the vote.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
As a new board member, I have not shared my views publicly on this topic, and I'd like to do so tonight. Nothing is more important than the safety of our students and staff. Schools should be safe places. Currently, our elementary schools are gun-free zones. Introducing armed guards does not guarantee they will be secure. What it does is consciously and willfully make guns a part of our youngest children's daily lives without evidence that there is effectiveness beyond the sociological benefit that some parents might feel, without experience or training on working in an educational setting, without experience or training on working with vulnerable student populations, without discussion or acknowledgement of the risks associated with these additions, and without a public hearing to include the broader community. This is a bigger conversation than a nine-person board, an issue not of education but of culture. I've heard from many parents who share the concerns I have outlined. Their voice deserves representation, too. As Board of Education members, we must ask ourselves now and at every turn, how does this impact students? This initiative prioritizes the addition of seven FTEs that are not student-facing. The answer to gun violence is not more guns. I will be voting no.
Thank you, Mrs. Loveland, for saying that. Yes, Mrs. McCammon?
Point of clarification, I'm not sure I, I hear the point, but I know we've talked extensively about a few components of it, including training. So I just want to be clear that while there may be things that we need to figure out as part of the implementation, and I, I just want to be clear that I think that training and working with vulnerable populations is something the board has highlighted and talked about, and will continue to follow up.
Appreciate that, Mrs. McCammon. I will, I will back you up on that. I certainly appreciate Mrs. Loveland's comments. And, but I do feel that the administration, the board, and the Chief of Police have done their homework throughout this process. We've had extensive meetings, extensive conversations. We've heard from the public. We did discuss risks. We did discuss implementation. We'll hear more about implementation. Dr. Adley did go over specific training. We'll hear more about training, the rollout and the implementation of it. So while it is a difficult topic, I think it also, as I've said previously, it's a topic where I think as a district, we have to leave. We have to lead. I don't want to be talking about it and talking about it and not take action. And I think that's where we're at at the district, and I applaud the board and the administration and the community that has reached out to us, but I think we've gone through the process. And a big thank you to the Chief of Police and his staff that have helped us through this process. So I appreciate everyone's comments and thoughts, and now we'll move it to finish the vote. So we had a second, we had discussion. All those in favor, bear with me a second. All those in favor of the approval of the District Director of Security, one FTE, and six school security officers, six FTEs. That is Seeny, Best, Brown, Maroni, McCammon, Deneen, Parent, and Worm for. All those against, Mrs. Loveland, any standing? No. All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Katie, for your feedback and your input there, and we move forward. We will move on to discussion on October 2022-2023 financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers. As Mr. Seeny mentioned, a good, as always, finance committee meeting, a lot of good questions, and as always, Rich made a good presentation. So, Rich, I'll turn it over to you. The clock is ticking. Come on, Rich. You don't need a deck. Just talk.
May I suggest, can you start without the presentation being?
So the financial report through October did have a positive balance of $565,731. The general education RCs were a positive $248,181. The special education RC is a positive $317,550. And I do want to highlight that the general education RCs do include the projected deficit for the security program. If you were to strip that out, that positive balance would be $533,000, and the overall positive balance would be $850,572. So what brings it down is the actual cost of the security proposal, which has a pending transfer for the board tonight. And so that surplus within the general education RCs is what recommended to fund the program for security. Nothing is coming from special education or ECR. If we look at the savings and salaries, we are forecasting a positive $146,865. It is primarily due to the three sections, the elementary school that were not filled due to lower-than-anticipated enrollment. That makes up about $195,000. We do have a new custodial and maintenance salary schedule, which yielded about $51,000 to the positive. And then we have the security proposal, which is a deficit of $235,000.
I'll pause. Are there any questions at the top of that? Mr. Palin has also stayed throughout the meeting. If there's any questions from a Board of Finance standpoint. Hi, Richard.
So the operating account is forecasted at a deficit of $22,320. And again, that is primarily due to the materials associated with the SSO program. And then we have a small positive balance in the China exchange and then dues and fees related to the teacher and residence program. The fixed area is a positive $94,000. It's primarily due to savings in health insurance. Again, that savings is associated with the three elementary sections that were lower than anticipated due to enrollment, and then one less teacher and resident. Revenue is positive by $347,060. ELP tuition is below forecast by about $34,000. Excess cost is positive to the budget of $378,000. We did spend a number of, a good amount of time at the finance committee, as well as the Board of Finance discussing this. The primary reason for the swing from the previous month is our threshold was dropped to $104,000, and we were forecasting $109,000. So we essentially pick up $5,000 for every claim that we're able to submit. And so that $5,000 multiplied out across almost 60 claims helps generate that. And then we have a few more claims that now we're actually able to submit for because of that threshold as well. And so that's generating that additional revenue. We are still forecasting that cap of 70% based on the new state legislature. But that additional excess cost money won't come in until February, and then again in May. And again, we are not touching the projected increase in excess cost revenue that we're expected to see. So there are five transfers recommended for the Board of Education's approval. The first is to fund our water account. Aquarian is increasing rates by over 13% starting in April. And so this is really just a portion of what that rate increase will be. It's that April, May, and June. You will see a significant increase in the water account when you get the budgets back in December. We are recommending taking the funds from salary savings for the principal at Royal that turned over during the summer, and then some savings from unaffiliated salaries. The second transfer is to fund a prorated portion of the Director of Security. We are recommending taking the funds from the unfilled section at Homes, which was not filled due to enrollment. And then a third transfer for $187,062 for a prorated portion of the six armed school security officers. We are recommending taking the balance from the unfilled section of Homes. We did generate $27,000 in savings from staff turnover of a music teacher, and then unfilled section again at Royal that I mentioned earlier, and then Hindy as well. And then a balance of savings associated with the unaffiliated salary increases. The fourth transfer is for payroll taxes associated with the SSOs and the Director of Security. We are recommending taking those funds from the savings and the unaffiliated salary increases, as well as premium savings from the workers' compensation. And then the fifth transfer is the materials for the security program, and that's just over $30,000. And we are recommending taking balance from savings in the KERMA workers' comp renewal, as well as the savings from the property insurance renewal, and then health insurance from the unfilled elementary sections that I mentioned before.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Palin, anything you want to add from a Board of Finance perspective? Thank you. Board questions or comments? Mr. Seeny, anything from the Finance Committee?
I mean, you know, I just want to reiterate, you know, after paying for the security guards and the SSOs and the Director of Security, we're still running $565,000 surplus. And there's some adjustments that you are foreseeing going forward around.
So we still have some teachers that we have to fill that I'll have some adjustments. We actually think in the next report, you'll see a positive adjustment to tuition within special education. So there'll be some small adjustments that'll go forward.
Okay, so, you know, there were some concerns raised about, you know, potentially if we had to fill in for services, required services, that we wouldn't have the funds, but I would assume that, you know, based on any sort of services, $565,000 is a pretty significant amount of money that we could pursue those services. Is that right?
If we needed services, we would utilize this fund. If we did more than that, we'd have to go back for an appropriation. And I think the Board of Finance has made it very clear that they're ready, willing, and able, and stand by and work with us from a partnership standpoint. But I think based on Rich's forecast and Mrs. Klein is part of these conversations all the time. I mean, if there are needs, carrying a half a million-dollar surplus at this point in time is a good surplus. We gave back $675,000 at the end of the last year's budget cycle, so we'll continue to monitor and look at it closely. Mrs. Loveland?
Just want to clarify the point that this surplus is not yet real. It's projected. Is that right, Rich?
So the excess cost portion is projected. The surplus associated with the unfilled elementary section is real. We're not filling those sections.
Right, but in terms of this 565 that we would have left over, that, those are projections, and they're based on using the maximum allowable percentage. So it's possible that we won't, because we're capped at 70%, but it's possible that we won't get that full 70%.
So the state legislature does tier it currently by 70%, and then higher for districts and town wealth. It's not similar to what it was in the past, where you could have floated anywhere from, let's say, 65% to 80%. 70% is our number, unless the state legislature acts to change that.
Thank you for that. I do just want to say regarding whether or not a dollar amount is enough, we never really know until we get through, and we're pretty early in the year. It's November. It's not May. And in terms of the comment that if we don't have enough, we would go back to the Board of Finance for more, it's important to note that doing that would essentially give the Board of Finance line item veto over educational programming.
That's an incorrect statement, Mrs. Loveland.
If we, if we went to them for an appropriation.
If we went for them for an appropriation like we've done in the past, where we built our justification, the Board of Finance has been there, has listened to us. I've worked with Jack Davis and Ed Woscheck, and we've gone through the process. I don't think we need spin or rhetoric around this conversation.
It's not.
If we can help you continue to learn, you know, in terms of how the excess costs and the finances work, but I think this is the way the surpluses are forecasted at work, at work. And I think Rich does an incredible job in keeping us all abreast. And as a board coming through this and the changes that happened over the last month, I mean, I'm comfortable with where we stand. Mr. Seeny, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I am as well. I mean, we, if you watch the surplus build over the year, and they are projections, but they're built also on what's behind us. So only last month, we were looking at a surplus of $9,000 after accounting for, it was almost $10,000, I should say, after accounting for any security costs. And hence, I think that's why we carried it forward to the Board of Finance with the intention of potentially receiving a special appropriation. Since that time, and as pointed out at the Board of Finance meeting publicly and during our Finance Committee meeting, more money has been projected. As Rich has said, a lot of this is behind us and is pretty certain. So I'm very comfortable, you know, recommending these transfers to fund the half-year, give or take, of this school security officers and the Director of Security.
Just as a matter of process, there is volatility built into any given year, particularly in special education, because as students come in and out, that's why the school finance project exists. It's known across the state that volatility is difficult. It's difficult to do budgetary projections. So we, we don't actually currently usually carry any sort of buffer in that. We build our budget off of projections on any given year. If we were to have large unexpected fluctuations, we could end up having to go for an appropriation, and we would. I think in this current year, I do agree that we continue to have to monitor. You know, we've talked about over this past couple of years, increased rates of identification. We've talked about compensatory services, and so I certainly think that we, as a board, need to continue to pay close attention. I think it's really important that we need to talk carefully and kindly and inclusively about all of our students. And if at any point we ever have to ask for more dollars, that we hear the point that it's, it's not just because certain kids are more expensive than others that we, as a board, and we, as a community, support educating all of our kids, no matter who they are or what they cost. And that's something that, that, you know, we've worked on in years since, and we may still have more work to do. But I think there's a lot of us up here who commit to doing that work, should we find ourselves in that situation. But I think as a matter of process, we don't typically carry, with the exception of budget control, we don't typically carry any sort of surplus that is unbudgeted, except that we're projecting this excess cost, and we have unfilled sections.
Mr. Brown?
I just want to really quick say thank you, Rich, for doing this work, and, you know, we do appreciate your efforts and your hard work and the skills that you're able to bring to this position, and your very spot-on forecasting that you've given us over the years. You're able to forecast everything perfectly. I think you'd have a much other easier job somewhere. That being said, you know, you provide us with great analytics. We're able to use business judgment essentially here on the state of play as we know it at a time and look forward. So thank you for your hard work.
Mrs. Best?
Thank you. I understand the mechanics of what we're talking about here. As a precedent, is there anything that we want to consider moving forward? I don't, to my knowledge, I don't believe that we've ever used transfers and an existing surplus to fund the hiring of seven new FTEs. And we're basically creating a department. We're hiring six security guards in the administration that will oversee them do, without a vote for us to do that. I, I know I've heard mention of things that have happened in the past with surpluses that were looked back on with skepticism. And is there anything that we need to build into what we're deciding now to carry forward? For the record, for those who come after us, I mean, not after us.
Who's coming after you?
Paranoid. Those who follow.
I think it's, I think it's a good question. I think in my eight-plus years on the board, you know, there's, I don't want to go back in history. I think, you know, we're charged as elected officials to work with the administration. I think this was brought through the right process. the right process in terms of getting it to the point of board members understanding and wanting to move forward with the change in the security protocols. We have an appropriation. Jack Davis summed it up one time. If we wanted to spend fifty million on pencils, we could once we get the appropriation. So I think the appropriation is there for us to manage the district. I think we budget tightly against that. I think this forecast and some changes to it have given us the opportunity to fund this in-house and continue with the surplus. And I think we worked very closely with the board of finance. It got to a good, you know, a good place. I think, you know, maybe from a retreat standpoint, or if the board wants to have further conversation around the process, but I think it's within how we do business. If we see a need to add security, just like we see a need to add security from a physical standpoint to these buildings, it is our, it is our. Mr. Seeny, anything you want to add?
No. Some, well.
Yeah.
Just, just actually for the board, I think, I think the board knows if, if we go for an appropriation for something that we, that we wanted and for some reason we didn't get the appropriation, it doesn't mean to say we don't get the item. We would have to come back to the table and make some decisions here at the board. So it's not that particular item. And also we can't go back at the end of the year with a negative budget. So.
Right.
Legally.
All right. Thank you for the conversation.
Dude, one, one suggestion, we, we did the, as we reviewed the transfers, we did them separately. I don't know if you guys are set up to do that this evening in terms of, you know, somebody wanted to vote for the first transfer versus the, the other.
Do we want to break up?
I mean, do you want to do the first transfer and then the security transfer is all as one?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah.
So it would be?
To transfer the five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one.
All right. So a motion to approve the five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars as presented with respect to Aquarian rate hikes in April. Transfers coming from savings and turnover at principals and unaffiliated salary. Second, Mr. Seeny. First, Mr. Seeny, second by Mrs. Best, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Unanimous.
And then, do you have it? So the rest are all associated with security, right, Rich? I can't have that quickly.
Now, do you have, do you happen to know that number?
Yeah.
Two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Say that again?
Two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight forty-one.
Eight forty-one. So motion to accept the transfers as presented for two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. Motion. Mr. Maroni, second. Mrs. Worm, all those in favor? It is Seeny, Best, Brown, Maroni, McCammon, Deneen, Parent and Worm. Anyone against the transfer? Mrs. Loveland, any abstentions? All right. Thank you. Thank you for the conversation. We're moving forward with, I think, a much worked on, thought through security protocol change and we'll continue to monitor, we'll continue to listen to the parents and from an administration standpoint, we look forward to hearing in short order kind of implementation, training and rollout plans. So thank you for that. We will move on quickly. Anything update on the personnel report, Miss Siam?
Just to clarify that those are not resignations, they're appointments. I just didn't change the heading there, but these are two people that we hired.
Oh, good. Okay. Great. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Parent.
How many positions are still outstanding?
Well, we, sorry, we have two, we have two psychologists, one at ELP and one at one of the elementary schools. And unfortunately, we got another resignation today. So it's just gonna be.
Of another psychologist?
No, no, no.
Oh.
No. Of an art teacher, but that's just the way this year is going to be.
I was recruiting, bud.
It's tough. I mean, it's just, it's tough, but we had an HR area directors meeting and everyone is struggling there. You know, we are actually more filled than our surrounding districts.
Jinx it, please.
I know, I know.
Yeah, take that back. Very good. Michelle?
Anyone in person has comments?
Anyone in the audience? Sure.
Sarah, Hotel twenty-two, Brushy Hill Road. And I just want to say I'm so excited about the ASL course, so.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Lana Walsh, Seventeen Pleasant Street. I'm a co-chair of CDSP, but these comments are utterly and completely my own. You all keep talking about going back for another appropriation at the end of the year if needed. Not for nothing, but this started out as an appropriation that you were asking the BOF for. You went to the meeting and you came away with not even asking for it because they weren't going to even vote on it. So you can talk about doing an appropriation, asking for an appropriation until the board of finance changes their mind. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me.
Katrina O'Connor, Fifteen Highland. Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Rudel, all the financials. I will say though, that the majority of the conversation was always focused on what was coming back due to the lowering of the threshold, you know, and again, I will say that yesterday at my, at our DEI meeting, we had a whole discussion about difficult conversations. And Dr. Mrs. Klein was there. You were there, you were there, a lot, a couple of you were here. And I looked at all of you as parents were speaking about the problems in special education and you all looked kind of shocked and surprised. And you have a PAR report every meeting and you look at it and it's usually a psychologist, a special education teacher, an OT, an SLP. And there's no follow-up questions. And, you know, I've put two kids, I've put two kids into college. Have you ever heard the term demonstrated interest? You have to demonstrate interest because demonstrating interest shows that you support something. And special education and student services deserves the equity at this table, not just in your cabinet meetings, not just by one member coming in, into the end and saying, oh, yes, we all have to just, you know, think about this more often. Every meeting, you should be asking for updates. It's not just up to the department chair. I, I would love to be in your cabinet meetings. There's a lot of communication between the CDSP and administration, but I just don't see a lot of questions being asked at this table. We have all these people who are resigning. You're not asking questions. None of you. Maybe a couple of comments. Tell us what you need. Tell us what you need. You have to make an investment. It is equitable and it's fair and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking again. I, I will speak briefly. I think the, some of the public comments about the appropriation. I think it's, it's important not to have the rhetoric and the spin out there because I think that adds to the challenges of communication and it filters through social media and it's all put out in the wrong context. I think thanks to Mr. Palin, who is here, and Mr. Rudel and the board, we had the right conversation about the appropriation process. We discussed thoroughly the change in surplus and the finances. We, we explained thoroughly the, the change in the special ed costs. So the process worked and the process will continue to work because of the partnership with the board of finance and the partnership with the RTM subcommittees in the RTM. So those that continue to want to push on the challenges there or what wasn't done or wasn't done correctly, it's just misinformation. The process worked and it worked effectively. So thank you all. With that, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Seeny, second by Mrs. McCammon. All those in favor? Public comments?
There are no raised hands at this time.
All those in favor, unanimous. Thank you. Everyone have a very good Thanksgiving. Thank you.